Good evening. I call to order this special meeting of the Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, March 1st, 2023.
Real call, please.
Commissioner Van Dern is here. Commissioner LaVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner Berry.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Here.
They have a quorum. All right. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And while everyone is standing, anyone who testifies before this commission is required to be sworn in. So please raise your right hand and swear that any and all testimony that you give will be the complete truth. Thank you. A reminder also, please, cell phones, electronic devices need to be silenced. And a reminder, we have sign-in sheets in the hallway, in the overflow room, and as a last resort at the podium, anyone who testifies has to be signed in with their name and point of contact. Next step here is open forum. Is there anyone here who would like to address this commission this evening on any item, any subject that is not on tonight's agenda? If so, this is your chance. Seeing none, we'll move on. I want to review the public hearing procedures we'll be using tonight. We have two separate agenda items, but of course they're closely related. So as a result, I want to consider both of these items together at the same time. So first, I'll open the public hearing for the first item, PZC 0592022, and I'll ask the petitioner to make his presentation regarding those requests. Second, village staff will provide its report to the commission and to the public on that item. And then, before continuing to the public, I'm going to open the public hearing for PZC 060, the second item, and ask the petitioner to make their presentation for that item. And following that, village staff will provide their report to the commission and the public on that item. And then, we'll open the both agenda items for public comment and questions. And then, once everyone in the audience has had their opportunity to speak and have their questions answered, I'll ask the commissioners for their comments and questions. Once that's concluded, then I'll close the public hearing on both of these items. And then, the commission will vote to recommend their requests for the first item, 059, followed by a vote for the second item, 060. And I want everyone to understand that this body is a recommending body only. We do not issue final approvals. Once we have voted on them, these items will appear on a future agenda of the village board for a final vote. And given the complexity of these requests and given the number of people who are in attendance, it's possible that we may not be able to conclude these public hearings tonight. If we run out of time, they'll be continued to a specific date in the future. It's seven o'clock now. Once we reach 10 o'clock, we'll assess whether we can complete these hearings tonight. If there's significant work to be done, we'll have a continuation. But if it appears that we can finish these items up in a short order after 10, we'll press on. And finally, I'd like to address the public comments and the decorum that we expect tonight. First, you know, this commission is greatly interested in everything that everyone here has to say. And we value this input and we listen carefully. Everyone who wants to speak will be given an opportunity. We've discussed the sign-in sheets. I would like to limit everyone's comments, each individual, that is, to five minutes. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, each individual can, if necessary, speak a second time. I'd like to limit that to additional two minutes. If an individual is representing a group of people, such as an attorney for a homeowners' association, then that representative will have more, will give at least, will give 10 minutes or so additional time. If other people have covered a topic that you want to address, you can either refrain, of course, but if you want to come up and speak, we ask that you simply state that you support those comments that were previously made. The commission doesn't need to hear the very same points made over and over and over. And finally, we do ask, in fact, we demand that every speaker is treated, and this process is treated with respect. We don't want to hear any booing or jeering or clapping or cheering, you get the idea. The person speaking should be the person at the podium, not in, so audience comments, we're not going to tolerate. This public hearing is our democratic process, and it really only works when everyone treats the participants and the process with respect. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I just make a quick comment?
Please.
This is being livestreamed and recorded. No one can hear you if you're not at the microphone at this podium. So if you are in the back and you try to say something, no one, we won't be able to record it for the minutes, and no one in the general public and no one in the recording will be able to hear it. So please, if you are speaking, do it at the podium. This goes for petitioners and attorneys as well, because if you get too far and you're trying to point at the screen, we will not pick you up in the microphones.
Those two microphones on top of the podium are what picks it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. New business, first item, PZC 0592022, requests from WCW Land Owner Limited Liability Corporation regarding the property of 3500 Midwest Road in Oakbrook, Illinois, for the following. First, zoning ordinance request, variance request, to permit an off-premises ground sign. Second, preliminary plat of subdivision to subdivide one parcel into five lots. Who would speak to this agenda item?
Good evening. Good evening. Thanks for having us this evening. My name is Russ Whitaker. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Rosenov and Whitaker, 127 Aurora Avenue in Naperville. Here this evening as counsel for Core Spaces. Core Spaces is the contract purchaser of Lot 2. In the proposed subdivision, it will be discussed primarily as case 2. I've got a host of consultants with me today, subject matter experts. Rather than marching everybody up one at a time to talk about an isolated segment, I'm going to do a general overview of the project that these gentlemen and ladies are all here with me. And as we get to specific questions and answers, if it's, whether it's from the public or from the commission, they'll be available to speak to their subject matter expertise. I do also want to point out that I've got Ari Rosenthal with me this evening, Ari's counsel for the golf course owner. The property this evening for PZC case 059 relates to the entirety of the Willowcrest Golf Course property.
Russ, can you do that in a slideshow so it shows bigger to everyone? Thank you.
So, PZC 059 relates to the entirety of the Willowcrest Golf Course property. The golf course is part of a larger B3 district, which originally encompassed approximately 150 acres. Concept plan that we have up on the screen right now was approved by Westmont historically, I think it was back in 1981. As you can see on the site plan, there was a unified development plan. There was the hotel and conference center, which we all know. There was the surrounding golf carts, which of course we all know. And then there were three 10-story office buildings that were originally contemplated in a two-story parking structure located, to be located between those office buildings. The concept, the contemplated use were all synergistic. It was meant to be a dynamic, a dynamic business district that was going to be of regional interest and be significant traction for the Village of Westmont. Of course, we know the office buildings never developed. The residents of Oakbrook Hills were constructed in lieu of the office buildings. The next slide depicts the condition of the property as it exists today. So, here we are, nearly 40 years after the original conceptualization of the development. Market conditions have changed. The hotel is not a regional business hub. It's in fact, a little bit of an outlier. You can spot that the golf course is kind of identified in the middle of the screen there, but it's largely surrounded by residential uses. The hotel cannot support an 18-hole golf course, nor is an 18-hole golf course accretive to the long-term operation of the hotel. Last time we were here, it was March, actually, I think it was March 9th, so almost exactly a year ago, Steve Ellingson was here from Hotel Ownership. And Steve talked a bit about what was happening with the golf course, what was happening with the hotel, and the act of repositioning that was under, being undertaken at the hotel. As you can see on the slide, ownership has invested more than $25 million into their efforts. They're focused now on Mother's Day brunch and hosting weddings, much less so on hosting corporate, corporate business retreats of thousand-plus people. So the need for, or the use adjacent to the office buildings, the need for the golf course just doesn't fit with the character of, the character of those operations as the repositioning. In that same vein, Owner is also seeking to reposition the golf course as a new nine-hole golf course catering again to the local community. They're working with Raymond Hearn Golf Course Design on redesign to accommodate this vision. As you can see on the bottom hand, bottom portion of the screen, we're showing potential redevelopment of holes 1 and 9 as part of the redevelopment and creating the new nine-hole golf course. Other improvements will be incorporated throughout the golf course, refurbished sand traps, replacement of dead trees, car path repairs, and safety netting, which is frankly, in a state of pretty bad repair. In association with the repositioning of the golf course as a new nine-hole golf course, Owner has negotiated conservation easement to encumber that new nine-hole golf course. This conservation easement ensures that a portion of the property will be maintained as open space in perpetuity. The conservation easement importantly runs to the benefit of the Park District. There was a Park Board meeting last night, and the Park District in fact approved the conservation easement as was presented to the board. Under the terms of this easement, the owner would continue to operate a revamped nine-hole golf course as long as it made business sense in association with the hotel. However, in the event the owner decided to seize operation of the new nine-hole golf course operation, the owner is then obligated pursuant to the conservation easement to convey the conservation easement property to the Park District. That conveyance would occur free of charge. The Park District could thereafter continue operation of the golf course, or if they deem necessary, could reposition the property for some other park-type uses, which are specifically specified in the conservation easement. The exhibit that we're looking at here is an exhibit to the conservation easement. It shows the property that's encumbered, sort of the darker gray portion of the property. It also shows a residential buffer zone, which is sort of hashed around the Oakbrook residences. And then it also shows a hotel buffer zone, which is located just south of the hotel. Some different activities are specified in the conservation easement, depending on whether you're in the general conservation easement or some of these specified areas. When we look at the plat of subdivision that is being proposed with this, with this 059 case, what you, what you'll see if you think back to that last slide is, the plat of subdivision is drawn very much off of what we've already negotiated on the conservation easement. So the golf course is being subdivided into five new legal lots of record. Lot 1 and Lot 4 cover the bulk of the new nine-hole golf course and are subject to the conservation easement. Lot 3, which is just south of the, just south of the hotel property, is not included in the conservation easement, but is created as part of this plat of subdivision. The general thought process is the back of the hotel is located very close to this portion of the property. It includes stormwater for the hotel. At some future date, if the golf course operation does seize, this Lot 3 would probably want to be added on to the hotel property. Lot 5 is a small one, up at Cass Avenue and the entrance of Willowcrest Drive. As many of you probably know, there's a large hotel sign right on the corner of that intersection. Rather than conveying that portion of the property to the Park District in future conveyance and dealing with easements, we've simply excluded that Lot 5 from the conservation easement, and that Lot 5 will be retained in association with the hotel. That leaves Lot 2, which is the southwestern portion of the plat of subdivision. I believe it's about 48 acres, and that portion of the property is being positioned for redevelopment. I think the last thing I would note in association with this case is, we also have a sign variance that was, that was mentioned. Technically speaking, the sign for the hotel is already located on golf course properties, so it's an off-premise sign. We can't find any record of that ever having been permitted, so we have a variance request to identify that as an off-premise sign and make it a permitted use on a move-forward basis. If there's any questions specific to this one, I'd be happy to address those.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to quickly state, because we have a nice audience here tonight, that staff's role is to try to explain some of the code aspects of this. Sometimes I can get a little technical. I'm going to try not to get too technical. And as goes with my commission, if I get too technical or not technical enough, please let me know, and I'll try to re-explain. But basically, I'm going to try to explain in the village's terms what the petitioner just presented to us. So there are two formal requests before us here tonight, and then several other extraneous things that affect the two requests. So first, I'm first going to take the subdivision. So what you heard the petitioner say was that they were here about a year ago. And if you remember, about a year ago, there was a conceptual preliminary plat. So what we told the petitioner when they approached us is, we kind of need to know the land area that you're talking about. So they gave us a conceptual idea of what they were looking at. So if you remember, they were taking the golf course, which is kind of like a reverse crescent shape that is around the property. And Russ, actually, if you put up the conservation easement map, that might give a visual that people can have. So that map you're looking at, the really dark gray area, is one half of the golf course. The other half is the kind of triangular-shaped area that is in the bottom southwestern corner. So that is one parcel right now. And initially, they came to us and said, we only want to split that into two lots. Basically, part of the golf course that's going to remain, which is the front nine, and part of the golf course that they want to turn over for development, which is the back nine that's up against Cass Avenue. So what's different about the request now? Because it's changed. Now it's a five-lot split. And really, I think what it is, is they got into the technical details and realized that they, they had other needs, and that this five-lot split is trying to address some of their other needs. So I'm going to try to quickly address what those are. So Lot 1 is the remaining nine holes of the golf course. So that is the portion that would be in this conservation easement. I'll speak to the conservation easement a little bit more in a second. But basically, that's, that's the lot that will be retained in ownership by the golf course owners. And potentially, if someone in the business decides they don't want to run a golf course anymore, potentially it can become owned and managed by the Park District. The Lot 2 is that 52-acre swath of land that they want to turn over for development. Lot 3 is basically mostly right now, it is the biggest detention pond that is there. It is immediately adjacent to hotel, and that is not in a conservation easement, and that has potential someday, way down the line, for the hotel to maybe expand a little bit in that direction. It would be very difficult, because most of that is stormwater, most of that is pond, and it would be very expensive. Basically, they're saying, we need to reserve a little land, so the hotel can eventually expand if they need to. Lot 4 would be retained eventually by the hotel as well, and that's really outdoor space. So that is in the conservation easement, which what that means is that you can't build much of anything, other than maybe a gazebo or an outdoor space. And that is so that the hotel can have outdoor events. So if the golf course was ever turned over to the Park District, the hotel would still have an ability to do some outdoor events. So not a lot of construction, but the ability to have outdoor activities. And then finally, Lot 5, that is where the Hilton sign sits. And what the petitioner said is, well, if we turned over the other nine holes of the golf course, we would lose the benefit of signage on, on the intersection. So their solution was, we will subdivide off a little lot that contains the signs. They're willing to put an easement on that lot, so nothing can ever be on that lot other than signs. And then, that leads into the variance request. This is what we call an off-premise sign. Village of Westmont Code does not allow off-premise signs. The easiest example of an off-premise sign is a billboard. So if you're ever driving down the highway and you see someone advertising on a billboard, that is an off-premise sign. They are, they are advertising something that is not on the property. And our village ordinance limits that, and that's why you don't see a lot of billboards, if there's any, in, in Westmont, because we restrict that. It is what's considered legal non-conforming the way it sits right now, meaning it's an existing condition, they're allowed to maintain it, but what it doesn't allow is them to rebuild it. So their variance request is, can we solidify the permission to have this off-premise sign? Because that means that when that sign reaches the end of its life, they can replace it. So that's where the variance request drives from. So that's the basic request. Now, they have provided some other documents. I hope that the public did see. We have the agenda online, and all the documents were clickable, so you could go see what was provided. There's some extraneous documents that we're not voting on, but they are relevant. The first one was an agreement from 1985. So when this property first developed, the owners went and recorded an agreement against title to the whole property, including the townhomes that are inside the, the middle of this, the whole golf course. That gave permissions for shared stormwater and detention and rights to access. That's what allows the townhomes the ability to use the, the front entry drive and use the parking lot. There were all these agreements that the village wasn't a party to, that are on this property. So they provided a copy of that 1985 document to show that they, they've got some documents regulating all of these properties, even though they're kind of being separated a bit right now. The other document they provided is, they said, well, if this project was to move forward, we need to modify that agreement. And that modification was a draft document that we're not voting on, but it's, it's showing that they're going to have to modify it, and they at least gave us some of the language that they think at this point they, they will need to do. And then finally, there's the conservation easement. So you heard the petitioner talk about it. We're not actually voting on a conservation easement. That is a private document that would be recorded against title. But what it does, and I'm really using layman's terms here, not attorney terms, is it says that the owners of the golf course can continue to use and maintain the land as a golf course, the nine holes that remain, forever. But in the event they decide that they don't want to run a golf course, the Park District has the right to take ownership, and then the Park District can choose to run a golf course. Or the, the agreement outlines some of the things the Park District can do. So it basically says that they can program it as a park in certain ways. There are a lot of limitations that are built around the existing townhouses that are in the center, so that these activities don't get too close to the townhouses. And if you look, that area, which is the really darkly shaded area, it also goes all the way over to a good portion of the Oakwood development. So basically, it's a higher level of restriction. So if the Park District does take ownership, they're, the Park District is also limited in what they can do in those areas, so that you're not encroaching too close to, to the residential properties. The last thing to remember is that if the Park District did ever take control and wanted to do something, this entire area is still in the B3 district. There is a requirement for a concept plan approval. So one of the first documents you saw them put up there was the concept plan from 1985, which thought there'd be three office buildings. The Park District would have to go through a similar approval process through this commission and then through the board. So if the Park District ever did decide to program it, it would have to come back through public bodies. I haven't gone through everything in the staff report. I try not to overwhelm people, but I am always available for questions and in the petitioner as well. So that is, that is my best explanation of what this first piece is, and then they will come back and explain what their project is, and then, and then we can try to understand how this all works together.
Thank you, Joe. We'll continue now onto Planning and Zoning Commission 0602022, request from WCW Land Owner LLC, who's the owner, and Core PBSFR Acquisition Vehicle LLC, the petitioner, regarding the property of 3500 Midwest Road, Oakbrook, Illinois, for the following. We have seven items. First, comprehensive plan amendment to redesignate approximately 52.8 acres from parks and open space to single-family detached residential. Second, special use permit request to allow residential dwelling units in the B3 Special Development District. Third, a map amendment request to rezone from B3 Special Development District to a planned development overlay district in the underlying B3 Special Development District, with the following waivers from the zoning ordinance. First, a waiver to reduce the setback for legally subdivided internal parcels. And second, a waiver to reduce the minimum spacing between buildings. Fourth, zoning ordinance variance request to exceed the maximum area for driveways and to reduce the minimum landscaped area for yards abutting a street. Fifth, zoning ordinance, ordinance variance request to permit an additional ground sign. Sixth, zoning ordinance variance request to permit an off-premises ground sign. And seventh, B3 Special Development District preliminary and final concept plan approval. And who will represent this agenda item?
Again, for the record, I guess, Russ Whitaker, Rosenov and Whitaker, 127 Aurora Avenue, here this evening on behalf of Core Spaces as the applicant in the 060 case. So a little bit by way of introductions. So a lot of text here on the slide, I'm not going to read at all, but Core Spaces is a Chicago-based development firm, 20-plus years of experience, proven track record. They've developed in excess of 6,000 residential units. At this point in time, they're managing in excess of 4,000 residential units. Here, Core is partnered with Harrison Street. Harrison Street is, partnered with Harrison Street for this development in Westmont. Harrison Street is a nationally renowned development firm, or, I'm sorry, a...
Real estate private equity firm.
Sorry, just got lost there. They've partnered with, with Harrison Street, not just on this project, but on other projects as well. Together, they've established a $1.5 billion fund to build, build for rent communities across the United States. Harrison Street is one of the leading private equity funds in the country, with nearly $50 billion under management. Why is this important? It seeks, it speaks to sophistication. The parties that are presenting the plans for you tonight have developed and presented, have developed real-world experience. They're highly regarded firms in the commercial real estate world. They've thoroughly investigated market conditions, believe there's substantial demand in the market for the proposed development, particularly in great communities throughout DuPage County, such as Westmont. We look at the next slide, just a quick depiction of some of the development that Core has done. Again, we're talking about a sophisticated development entity with years, decades of experience developing multimillion, 10, 10, 20, 30, 40, and 50 million and more projects. What we focus on here in these images is different product type, but again, I think you see that the type of product that Core has delivered historically is classic-type facilities that a community can be proud of. When we focus on development specifically of this property, we kind of take a step back when we're developing a plan, right? And there's a bunch of things that we take a look at, and there's a bunch of things that are important to talk about when we're, when we're at a plan-commission meeting like this. Some of the things we're going to focus on here are history of the site. We're going to talk a bit about the comprehensive plan. We're going to talk about the existing zoning, and we're going to talk about site context. So a little bit about the history of the site. There's a long history. There's a lot of history with this, and we could go back to 1981, and we could spend an afternoon talking about lawsuits that date back even to the development of the residences of Oak Brook Hills. We don't have all that time, though. I think the important part of this story starts in 2016. The plan in front of you was approved by the village in 2016 through a string of ordinances. This redevelopment contemplated 250 new apartments. It included an auditorium, a new hotel ballroom. It was an intensive project. It ultimately, obviously, didn't get built. There was significant opposition, and the developer went back to the drawing board. In 2017, they came forward with another plan, as you see here. After a lot of debate, and a lot of discussion, a lot of angst, this plan got approved. The plan before you here is very similar to the 2016 plan, but really just in a different configuration. You've got a seven-story apartment building with 299 multifamily units. You've got additional single-family units to the south, and you've got a 46,000-square-foot two-story auditorium tucked in next to the residences of Oak Brook Hills. From this historic context, we understand that the village has historically taken definitive action to facilitate redevelopment, in fact, very intensive land uses on this property. A year ago, we were before the Plan Commission went on to the Village Board, and we presented the concept. I stated earlier, it was March 9th, 2022, and we were before this commission. At that time, there was not a specific development proposal for the site, but we wanted to, again, investigate the concept of development of the site. So what we presented at the time was this concept, was this amendment to the concept plan, really. And the amendment to the concept plan effectively removed what is identified as parcel four being at 52, 53 acres, and it removed that from the approved concept plan. The village effectively said, hey, we will consider redevelopment of that parcel. Bring us back something, and we'll talk about it at that point in time. Now, when the village did that, we also had an amendment to the comprehensive plan that was moving forward. At the time, we were requesting a comp plan amendment to single-family attached residential dwellings. We heard from this commission, we heard from the board, that there was concern about the attached product. Some specific board members challenged us and said, bring something better back, bring forward a good development plan, and we want to work with you on seeing development of the site. And so that's really where we are this evening. We've got that specific development plan in reaction to the action that was taken by the Village Board a year ago. The comprehensive plan. So we know that the village is willing to entertain development, right? They've got a history of speaking to it. So we look at the comprehensive plan, and what does the comprehensive plan say, right? The comprehensive plan is a visioning document. What are we going to do in the future? How should Westmont develop? And so the comprehensive plan sets forth general land use categories to say, this is how we think the future of, the future of the town should be developed from a property Notably, you can see circled, the large green spot circled, right? That's the golf course and the hotel. You can see the star on the hotel property. I think the, what I want to point out when we're looking at the comprehensive plan here, though, is that the comprehensive plan designates the property as parks and open space. It's uncontroversial, there's no doubt about it. The question becomes how and why, right? Why is, for example, the hotel, which clearly is not a park and open space, it's not a recreational use, it's a high-intensity business use, so why is the hotel designated as park and open space? And I think the answer comes back to, when the village developed the comprehensive plan, I think they looked at what was the current use of property, and in many instances, they overlaid a parks and open space designation on property when there wasn't an active use of property at that point in time. And a couple examples for you. And so if we look at the stars on this map, I think you can see four of them, right? The hotel is, the hotel's a great example. The hotel was obviously developed at the time, but I think it got labeled as parks and open space in association with the golf course, because the golf course seemed undeveloped. But if you look at the rest of the stars, so right there, just to the south of the golf course, there's two lots. They're zoned for manufacturing use. They're owned by Ty Warner. There's development facilities to them. They're clearly slated for future development, but they're shown as parks and open space on this development plan. Is that because the village thought that those were going to be parks and open space? Or is it because the village saw that they weren't used at the time, and they labeled them as such? I think it's the latter. In fact, as part of this development plan, we saw that as an opportunity. We approached Mr. Warner, and we specifically said, hey, is there any possibility of us getting that, incorporating that as parks and open space, like the comp plan says, and being able to create a connection down to Ty Warner Park? We were told in no uncertain terms, no, absolutely not. So labeled parks and open space, but clearly not parks and open space, right? It's private property, just happens to be vacant. So look at another one. The star down here, the village, not too long ago, approved development for BMW. So the open space that's labeled there on the plan is where the BMW dealership sits today. If we go to the star down here, that, again, not open space, that's the parking lot for standard market. What happened in both of those instances is, when the comp plan was done in 2013, those properties were vacant. The village picked them up as vacant, they labeled them as parks and open space, knowing that there was an opportunity to revisit. It's super important, though, right? Because it says, why were they labeled that way? Were they labeled because it was a future vision of the village, that these had to be maintained in this fashion? Or was it just a designation of existing land use? And I think for all the reasons I stated, it was the latter. A couple other things to note. We talked about 2016 and 2017 already, but I'm going to double back to those. So in 2016, I noted that with development plans that were approved, there was a whole string of ordinances. So we're looking at one of those ordinances here. It's ordinance 16-142, ordinance approving the rezoning of 3500 Midwest Road. So I've highlighted a couple of specific provisions here. This is talking about the comp plan. And if you look at C, the Village Board determines that the plan, talking about the comp plan, is technically in air, as it designates the subject property, of course, talking about the golf course property, as quote "open space." And said designation fails to account for the existing resort, hotel, and parking lot, and therefore should be amended. So the village has already decided that the comp plan was an errant designation of open space for this property. Go on to the next one, it's interesting. They handled it a little bit differently in 2016, but the next one effectively says, we've also determined that you don't really need to amend the comp plan along with the, along with the specific development proposal that was before you, so we don't have an ordinance amending it at that time, but we should clean this up later and come back and amend it. So as we know, there was litigation as a result of the 2016 case. The village came forward, considered a new plan. With the new plan, they wiped out all the 2016 ordinances, so that stuff went away. But it does not change the fact that the Village Board made legislative findings to state specifically that the comp plan is in air by designating the property as parks and open space. So we look at 2017. What did they do in 2017?
Can you come louder, please?
Yep, I'm sorry. So ordinance 1787, the village this time said, we're actually going to amend the comp plan. And so as part of the development proposal that was before them at that point in time, they did, in fact, approve an ordinance amending the comp plan, and they designated the property 34 acres as general commercial, 40 acres as single-family residential, 54 acres as open space. So when we think about our proposal, let me stick on that for a second. When we think about our proposal, what we're asking for tonight with respect to the comp plan and the proposed development of this property is no different than what has already been done twice. It's no different than what's been done at the BMW or at the standard market. It's taking a property that once was vacant, got labeled in air, parks and open space by the village and the comp plan, but was subsequently changed or found in error on multiple occasions. So the, to be clear, the proposal before you tonight is an amendment to the comp plan for single-family detached dwelling units. That was kind of the feedback we received from this commission. It was also the feedback we received from the Village Board. So I think it's important to note that we heard you. We came back with a modification to the comp plan request, consistent with the direction we'd heard, and in fact, we've revised the plan in that same fashion. So identified zoning, comp plan and zoning are things that we've got to consider when we're looking at how or what should be developed on a property. We're going to evaluate the existing zoning and what is legally permissible. As you can see in the map, and I've kind of, you can see the golf course and the hotel all red, and I've kind of highlighted the development parcel in yellow there, but you can see that the property is zoned B3. It's a commercial zoning designation. Under this designation, the property owner has a legal right to develop the property pursuant to the terms of the zoning ordinances. In many cases, the type of development could be, that could be permitted under this B3 zoning designation are significantly more intense than anything that is being proposed here this evening. I think it's important to note that we are not requesting a rezoning of the property. We seek to work within the confines of the zoning as it exists today. The chairman read through the specific request, they're outlined here again. And just talking quickly about them, though, it's the comp plan amendment, which I think I beat up pretty good. We're not changing the zoning. Again, I think an important component of retaining the underlying B3 zoning. We are seeking a special use in the B3 district to permit residential dwelling units. Take a look at those residential dwelling units in just a moment. We have, we have a variance. We've got one variance as it relates to the actual development proposal, right? That one variances, that one variance, not variances, the one variance relates to landscaping in the front yard. We've got a whole landscape plan, and we've got experts who can talk about how development plans in front of you this evening far exceed the code requirements. We just don't technically comply with one requirement as it relates to the width of a landscape area in the front yard in relation to the driveway. So we can dive into that in greater detail. We've got two other variances. They're, in my mind, again, technicalities. Those variances relate to the sign, not the, not the sign we talked about in the first case, which was the Hilton sign, but on the opposite corner, there's a sign for the golf course. It's a smaller wooden sign, but again, we're dealing with off-premise signage issues, and we're dealing with wanting a second sign on the Lot 2 property, so that we can maintain that golf course sign, whether the golf course is owned and operated by the hotel golf course owner currently, or whether it's maintained by the Park District. Maintaining that sign in that location has been an extended discussion with the Park District as part of the conservation easement, and it's a commitment we think is a reasonable request and one that we obviously agree to include in our application here. I think the one kind of, you see the B3 Special Development District and Final Concept Plan, Joe kind of talked about how we removed property from the concept plan a year ago, and so now the concept is, we're coming back and we're proposing a specific concept plan which would facilitate the development of the portion of the golf course as the residential dwellings. The last one that I didn't touch on, but I think is super important, is the plan development district. So we have suggested that we overlay the property with the plan development district. And I think that's important, because at the end of the day, by overlaying a plan development district, we're not just relying on the underlying zoning ordinance, but Attorney Zemanek and I have been bouncing back and forth on a plan development agreement. That plan development agreement is something that I imagine we'll spend a bit of time talking about tonight, because it's a 25-page document, and I think, based on feedback I heard in meetings with residents and feedback I heard from the Plan Commission last time, I think there's a lot in that plan development agreement that is in extended form covenant or strictures that will govern the future use and operation of the property. That plan development agreement says, not only are we going to construct a first-class resort-style development today, but that forever, we're going to maintain the project in that fashion. The plan development agreement, again, 25 pages without exhibits, talks about countertops. It talks about cabinets. It talks about exterior building materials. We'll show you the buildings, and we're committed to building with composite siding materials, right? Hardy or LP. With this plan development agreement, we can't change those things out. If we didn't do the plan development agreement, we could absolutely change those things out in the future. So what we've done with the plan development agreement is we've voluntarily subjected ourselves to a much higher degree of, higher degree of improvement, and we've ensured that those standards would live on for the length of the property in the applicable zoning. So I think that's a, it's a super important request and something that we can take a look at as we move forward here. There are, under the plan development, there are a couple of waivers that are permitted. One relates to the setback between, between the residential parcel Lot 2 and the golf course. It only affects two properties, two property owners, right? It affects us as the developer of the new residential development, and it affects the golf course owner who signed off on this application. So we don't think that that should be of a big material issue. And the second one relates to the spacing between homes, which we can look at and talk about in more detail. So here, I spent a bit of time talking about the plan development agreement. This is just a, kind of a mock-up of the plan development agreement, what the first page looks like. I'm showing you that this is a recorded document. It's a covenant that runs with the land.
Can you please speak louder for us guys here?
Sorry, it's, I think I'm tall and the microphone's not picking it up. And I cut out Section 10 and Section 11, if those are things we want to talk about, because again, that speaks to it being a maintenance-free community, which is an important element, and then it speaks to the long-term maintenance of the development. So we can come back to that as we move forward. So the last thing I wanted to talk about, sort of as the setup of why we're doing, why we're proposing what we're proposing, is site context, right? You must consider what's around us relative to how this property can and should redevelop. And so this exhibit looks at that surrounding area, and it says, to the north of us, we have a hotel, a 10, 12-story hotel, which is a significant commercial enterprise. It has, it's an intensive use. We're not concerned about it, but it certainly, it certainly impacts what is going to be developed adjacent to it. You look to the south of us, there's a manufacturers, manufacturing district. By and large, property, the uses in that manufacturing district are mostly office, and so they're not real offensive to adjacent residential. But when we have a manufacturing district adjacent to residential, we usually don't have low-density, single-family homes adjacent to manufacturing. So I think it's important to note, to the north and to the south, the context is commercial use and commercial use, and that needs to, that needs to influence the type of land use that's going and being located between those commercial land uses. And so then, the other thing that this exhibit is looking at, is it's saying, all right, what also is the context to the east and the west? We know we've got Oakwood to the, to the east. We're not, Oakwood's really, really big, so it's hard to get to specific numbers on Oakwood, but Oakwood is a very nice, large, single-family community. It's, I think it's a great addition to Westmont. If you look to, if you look to the west, what we've identified is three other neighboring properties. Those properties are directly across the street from us, and I think those properties were probably treated differently by Westmont when those properties were developed for a very specific reason. They're along Cass Avenue. Oakwood is not along Cass Avenue. Oakwood is very much protected, very much insulated from the intensity associated with the traffic on Cass Avenue. If you look at the developments along Cass Avenue, you have Royal Oaks, Royal Hills Club at 7.7 dwelling units per acre. You've got the Brookhill Apartments at 16.3 units per acre, and you've got the Indian Trail Townhomes at seven units an acre. One of those, I'm sorry, two of those are multifamily projects. One of those is a single-family attached product. As we now look to develop within that existing context, we are developing single-family detached, a lesser, less intensive land use than what is surrounded, what is surrounding us from the north or to the south, and we are developing a less intensive residential use, attached and multifamily to our west, to single-family detached on our property. We have seven units an acre to 16 units an acre on our west side. We are coming in at four and a half units an acre, which is consistent with a low-density single-family development. So those are, that's sort of the last thing I wanted to talk about before we get into some of the specific development plans, is setting up the context and why we think it's appropriate to look at the type of development we're proposing here tonight. So when we look at the site plan, we have 139, 139 dwelling units. Two, I'm sorry, 239 dwelling units, thank you. The community is designed as a build-to-rent community, which brings some unique components. It is a It is a maintenance-free community. Residents are not responsible for lawn care. They're not responsible for shoveling. They're not even responsible for components of the home. If a furnace filter needs to be changed, that's not going to be your responsibility. That is the responsibility of an onsite maintenance team. A centralized amenity center will, will serve as a social hub of the community. The design of the amenity center, which is inclusive of a clubhouse and outdoor spaces, is on par with Class A apartment, apartment communities in Chicago and affluent suburban neighborhoods. So why build to rent? So a couple of quotes here from, from some leading news sources, and they're talking about trends in the real estate industry. I believe it's the Forbes quote, "BTR communities are, are appealing for downsizing baby boomers who gravitate toward the advantages of a professional maintenance team, luxurious onsite amenities, and the privacy of a single-family home." Move on to, I believe it's a Business Insider. "BTR makes up 6% of all new homes in the current development world and could double to 12% as demand grows for more flexible housing." So if we would look back at the, the Westmont comprehensive plan, there's specific discussion recognizing that Westmont is a changing community. The demographic trends in Westmont are much older. The good news is the, the demographic trends are also more affluent. And so we have people with different needs. They don't necessarily need the, the two-story, large, single-family home. They may be snowbirds, spending time in Texas or Florida in the winter. They have different needs. And so we, as a, as a real estate development community, we look at different types of projects that can satiate, satiate some of those different needs. I, I think it was, the interesting statistic here was on incomes rising in Westmont, the number of households earning greater than $100,000 increased by 55%. When we look at residential use, and I, I think this is the highlighted section down here. The, the classification of residential uses is based on dwelling unit type and not form of ownership. Again, this is a quote directly from the comp plan. "The classification of residential use is based on the dwelling unit type, attached, detached, multifamily, not the form of ownership, rental or owned. Each type of residential category could conceivably contain both owner-occupied and rental. It is likely that each category does." And so you can see that we're wanting to talk about why this more unique form. And I, I think, I think what we're saying is there's a changing need in Westmont. I think anybody who's read anything about demographics, not only in Westmont, but in DuPage County in Illinois, in the United States, we are a green society. There's fewer kids being born, people are living longer, and it's changing dynamics in the housing, and that's why we think we see increases with 6% of housing supply, up to 10% of housing supply towards things like build for rent. What we've got here is a snapshot of the history of rentals in Oakwood. So I think the, the point here was that Oakwood was developed as a, as a traditional single-family community. It is predominantly owner-occupied, but things happen in life, and this slide shows that rentals have occurred in Oakwood historically. Rentals continue to occur in Oakwood. The rentals that have occurred in Oakwood have not affected the long-term viability or the pricing in Oakwood. Compared, and that, those, those rentals look back over a number of years. So just to be clear, that, that wasn't all current rentals that, that looks back. But this, this slide here is in fact, current rental listings that, that someone would, could go out and identify today. Just by way of comparison, you see the oxygen-free community on the right, four bedroom, two and a half bath, 2,000 square feet. We are anticipating rent at $4,000 a month. By way of comparison, in Oakwood, you can see there's a house on the market at $3,000 a month. Kind of a separate comparison, larger home. In Oakbrook, you can see there's a home listed for rent for $9,000 a month. We think that this information, both what has happened historically in Oakwood and what we see in current listings, is, is only supportive of what we're trying to do here with the build-for-rent community. As part of our financing, one of the things we would be required to do is to go out and seek third-party professional opinions. I think you guys got a copy, or the commission got a copy of this letter on their desk this evening. John Burns is a nationally renowned real estate expert. They look at developments, pre-development. They write these reports. These reports are relied on by professionals who are putting money into investments, and both on the private capital side and from a financing side. So this is a trusted source of expertise. And the, the highlights here are, I guess they're a little bit better visible on the screen up here. But per the most recent census data, there are 15 million households who rent single-family homes, about the same number that rent in large apartment buildings, meaning buildings of 10 units or greater. I, I thought that was an astonishing number, and it made me think about the Oakwood slide. I think there's more single-family rentals occurring than anybody knows or recognizes. There's just not an impact, there's not a great impact to the single-family rentals. So they're occurring naturally within our traditional for-sale communities, and, and it's something that's happening sort of in the background. So the, the, this report goes on and says the BTR is the fastest-growing housing sector in the US. Most recent survey identified more than 900 build-to-rent communities throughout the United States. They analyzed this specific location. They found that the location is well-suited for a build-to-rent, build-to-rent community based on a couple of highlights. Many households want to live in single-family homes, but prefer the convenience of renting, particularly mature, empty nesters and young families. And I think the last element is important. It draws the distinction between what we saw at $3,000 a month rent in Oakwood and the $4,000 a month that we will see in oxygen-free. Renters are willing to pay a premium to live in a professionally managed and maintained community with attractive amenities in comparison to rental homes scattered in existing neighborhoods with off-site owners' management. So we see all of this. It's just great evidence in support of the plan that is presented to you this evening. Let's talk a little bit about the actual single-family homes. We're proposing two different classes of homes. There are 169 30-foot homes in the top row, that is A to H. These homes are generally located north of Road B, which is the, the southern entrance to the community, and they're generally located around the perimeter of the community. There are 70 25-foot homes. Those homes are labeled I through L in the second row of the elevations. These are slightly smaller units. They're generally located on the interior streets in this location here, in this location here. On this slide, you can see color palette. We're proposing four different color packages, and then when you look at the site plan on the left, you can see we've even kind of allocated how the colors would be spread throughout the community. Floor plans are included in the homes package that we've submitted. Representative floor, these floor plans are representative, so interior layout of these plans may shift, but they're representative of the building width, the building length, the overall square footage. We're showing just one of those floor plans here. I think it's important to note, we heard this a lot from residents when we did an open-house style meeting, people challenged whether we were going to have an older segment of the population moving into this community because they weren't seeing first-floor masters or first-floor bedrooms. We have committed in the plan development agreement that 25% of all of the units will include a first-floor bedroom. Homes range in size from about 1,700 square feet up to 2,300 square feet. Here, we're showing a rendering. I believe this is the north side of the community, so these are 30-foot units, and you can see how the elevations kind of work in concert with each, with each other along, along the street frontage. We are committed to using high-quality building materials. That commitment is consistent with a long-term strategy for the project. Exteriors will use composite siding such as Hardy or LP. Interior components will include things such as painted shaker-style soft-close cabinets, luxury vinyl flooring, quartz countertops. There is, there's no segment of this project where someone is skimping trying to save money. The level of finish is specified in the PD agreement. It's not only an initial construction requirement, as I stated earlier, but a long-term maintenance requirement. We cannot come back in 10 years and change out the siding for vinyl siding. If we were to do that, we would be back before this board specifically seeking relief from that requirement. Just another image of the representative elevations. This is a 3D model, so this is, this is sort of a real setup of how the homes will relate to each other and how they will relate to open space. Don't have the, the specific site plan up before me, but I would note that one of the really cool elements of this plan is that over 50% of the homes actually back to open space, and you can kind of see that here. Again, this is the north side of the community. Kind of off to the top of the screen, you can see detention basin. The area behind the, the row of homes on the left would be looking towards the golf course. The row of homes on the right, there would be a large naturalized detention basin between, between any adjacent homes. The, the representative elevations are, are consistent with a more of a modern design aesthetic. This is not your prototypical single-family subdivision that exists all over DuPage County. I think we fully acknowledge that, and we're embracing that with some different architecture here. So we wanted to incorporate the, the more modern design elements in keeping with the unique character of the community. You can see some flat roofs incorporated in. You can see dark windows, and you can see what are otherwise just simple and very clean lines to the architecture. The amenity center, absolutely, absolute calling card for the project is the amenity center. Show the site plan here to, just to identify by location that the amenity center is centrally located, easily accessible for all of the residents of the community. It is located just off the primary entrance, meaning that as anybody enters into the community, they're going to see this amenity center. It's going to be a symbol, a character setter for the community, and it's going to help establish those rents, that high nature, that, that high-income character of the community. We've got a floor plan and furniture layout for, for the amenity center. We've committed in the plan development agreement that the, that the clubhouse, which is part of the amenity center, will be not less than 8,300 square feet. It will include things like an indoor gymnasium and a fitness center. It will include a lounge area, business center, and a separate kids' playroom. The clubhouse will also have space for onsite leasing personnel. You can see outdoor spaces, so I guess the clubhouse building, just to identify, is primarily the, the darker lines in this location. You can see the, the sport court on, on this, on the east side, thank you. And then to the, to the west side, this is a secondary building, but is primarily, is used for maintenance and then also facilities associated with the pool. So the clubhouse will flow into outdoor lounge spaces, an outdoor spa space, an in-ground pool with a sun deck, an outdoor, outdoor eating area, and then the outdoor eating area flows into a playground space for kids. As, as someone who, I, I'm from Naperville. We have a lot of communities, a lot of subdivisions with pools that were built into them in the 70s. We've got a thriving swim club in town. So I, I don't have a clubhouse like this in my community, but I can tell you, we have a pool and bathrooms associated with the pool. It's about it. But I moved from one part of Naperville to another part of Naperville in order to be next to this type of amenity. I wanted to know that when my little girls got up on a summer morning, that they weren't flipping on YouTube, that they weren't watching TV, that they had the opportunity to get up and to shuffle out the door to go to the pool. They do swim lessons, they do swim team, and they're actively engaged at that pool from 8:00 AM to noon every morning, every weekday throughout the summer. So this is, this is a huge calling card, and I think this is something that will help establish this community as one of the nicer in all of Westmont. We're showing here a foundation planting plan for the clubhouse. I show this really just to show the, the character of the landscape amenity around the clubhouse, and then I also show the 30-space parking lot, which will serve the clubhouse, and then the outdoor playground area for children in the community. Here, really what I wanted to do is just show a rendering of the clubhouse. This gives you an idea of the look and the design that we're trying to create with the, the clubhouse. I think you can see it's sort of complementary to the more modern architecture associated with the, with the homes in the community. Lots of light, lots of glass, similar-type building materials incorporated into this building. These are renderings of the interior of the, the clubhouse or the amenity center. You can see the pool, which is labeled as the backyard. The front yard as the lounge space just outside the clubhouse, and then you can see the social hub and the health club inside the clubhouse. I do a lot of development work throughout the region. We just did a Dell Web in, in Aurora. That's a 1,000-unit development. I think their, their amenity center for 1,000 units is slightly larger than this. I think they're 10,000 to 12,000 square feet on the clubhouse. So an 8,300-square-foot clubhouse for 239 single-family dwellings is truly extraordinary and is absolutely only accomplished by virtue of the style of community that's being built here as a build-for-rent community. I'm, I'm about done here, so please bear with me. Preliminary engineering, we've gone through preliminary engineering. We've worked with village staff to sort through most of the engineering issues. We've got a lot of work if this plan gets approved to do final engineering and come back through this process. But I, I wanted to just touch on two components of the preliminary engineering. One is stormwater. This was a primary focus on engineering of the site. The map here is showing the foundation of our stormwater design. What we're doing is we're overlaying elevations with the, with current drainage areas on the property. You can see that the red is high points on the property, green are low points on the property, and the arrows are showing you where water is currently flowing. Cutting to the chase, because I know engineering is really dry, this is the output from what we're doing in terms of design. Cutting, cutting to kind of the important numbers, oxygen-free detention requires the third line in this table, 21.73 acres. If we were building this property anywhere in DuPage County, if it was a farm field or if it was redevelopment, we would be required to build 21.73 acre-feet of storage for the residential development, period. Because of the historic use of the property and some of the old engineering documents, there's, there's some storage that exists on the property. It's not, it, it's not 45.5 acres because the property's currently unrestricted and it's flowing uncontrolled offsite. But what we've done here is we've agreed to over-design the property to not, to provide detention not only for the 21.73 acre-feet that we, we would be required for the residential development, but to accommodate an additional 45.5 acre-feet, getting us to 67.23 acre-feet of stormwater for this project. Now, by way of scale, the disturbed area is 48 acres, right? So we're providing a foot of acre, or a foot of water spread over an acre of property over the, over more than the entire land area, right? We're providing 1.4 acre-feet of stormwater detention per acre of developed property. It's extraordinary. I've never in 20 years of doing projects like this have I seen anything like it. In general, a typical residential development is going to require about .3, maybe .4 acre-feet of stormwater detention. So we're circa three to four times the stormwater detention that would normally be required for a residential project on this deal. And the reason we're doing it is because it was a priority to the village. We know it's a priority to the residents we've been talking about, and we do not want to have a negative impact as a result of what's historically happened on this property. We stepped up and we did the right thing. To make that happen, we do have a wetland impact. This is an approximate wetland delineation that was performed a couple of years back. We're showing that the, the ponds onsite are not wetlands, but there's a couple little fringe areas around the man-made ponds that have wetland qualities. This is an image of some of the areas. They're very small in size. You go back to this slide, we're impacting .6 acres. So we're impacting just more than an acre, call it 30,000, 30,000 square feet of area that is, that looks like this, right? It's a degraded wooden wall along the banks of a man-made detention pond. We need to remake that detention pond in order to increase the stormwater volume, in order to meet the higher challenge from the Village of Westmont. We can't do that without taking down the, the wooden wall. We can't do that without remediating the wetland. We also see that there's just some very low-quality wetlands on the site that are really not connected to anything. They're isolated, they, they provide very little ecological value. So we're going to wipe those out, again, .68, .68 acres, and with, those will be reincorporated into the plan, remediated pursuant to DuPage County Code at three times the value. The fact of the matter is, we will have wetlands onsite that are, that are acres and acres and acres beyond what exists today. So you saw the last images of what exists today. These are the images of what will exist in the detention ponds when we finish with the redevelopment of the property. Clearly an improvement, not just from, not just from an aesthetic function, but from a water quality function, from an eco, from an ecology function, from a habitat function. So I'm going to wrap up with just a couple of notes on the preliminary landscape plan. There's a lot of detail in the landscape plans, and I've got Daniel Grove from Kinley Horn. He's happy to dive into details here. But what I wanted to point out is that we've got some sort of unique areas that we've developed into the plan and we've spread them all throughout the development. So when we look at this plan, you see that there's a preserved oak grove to the north. I think the preserved oak grove is like three and a half acres where we're preserving trees, we're going to run a path through it, we're going to activate it for the first time so that not just our residents, but residents of Westmont can actually utilize that oak grove. We've got pocket parks, we've got social nodes, we've got eco nodes, and then I just talked about wetlands. You can see all of the areas that will become wetlands with the, with the future improvements. A little bit about the pocket parks. We've got three pocket parks. One is adjacent to the oak grove and is intended as more of a passive space, 20, 30,000 square feet, hammocks and other unique seating-type elements. The pocket parks are intended to be more active spaces. Pocket Park Two is at the terminus of the main entrance drive. This is just under an acre, I believe. We're planning a dog park in this location. Pocket Park Three is in the southeastern portion of the development down here. This will be planned for a children's play area. I mentioned social nodes. There's three social nodes throughout, in the community, you can see them on the plan. These are active gathering spaces. They're not as large as a park, they don't have playground-type equipment, but these are active gathering spaces. We anticipate benches or other seating elements, at least one of these will have a fire pit in all likelihood. There would also be enhanced landscape treatments in these social nodes. There are eco nodes throughout the development, eight of them. These are intended as landscape features throughout the community. One example is just south of the main entrance drive in this area. We've got a path extension that's running through there. This is an eco node because we've got a specific density of trees lining that path, trying to create a unique environment for a block or two when you're walking a path through the community. So it speaks to higher-level design that frankly, we don't get in many traditional residential subdivisions. Ped connectivity was a huge point, not just for us, but for the village and for, for the hotel as well. So you can see here, we've got a network of sidewalks and we've got pedestrian connections throughout the development. Heading to the north, you can see we've got a trail connecting up into the oak grove. I would note to the northeast, you can see a ped connection that's being incorporated into the hotel. The hotel is supportive of this development for a number of reasons, but one of the reasons is they're looking to be a more community-based hotel, right? We heard about that repositioning at the last hearing. This is a means of providing a new access to the community, for the community to the hotel. These residents can walk, and as a result of all of the trail connections throughout, and then continuing offsite to Blackhawk, we're actually providing interconnectivity to oak wood that does not exist today. Just very quickly, we've, if you, if you studied the landscape plan, we've got different typologies. What we're saying here is that there's different areas of the site that want to be treated differently from a landscape management standpoint. Again, we put a lot of thought into this. You can see flowing from the upland forest into the wet meadow where we've got more, more wetlands, into more of the savanna-style where we've got the bulk of the homes, and then with the wet, the wet meadows where we've got the large detention basins again. And if you look at the actual planting plan that is part of the landscape plan, you'll see that there's different, different plants that will be specified. You'll see that there's also different types of clustering of plants based on the typology that's identified here. Then I'm going to close with this one. This is the northern entrance to the community. You can see what the interface to the golf course is today. There's a, kind of a bad ball net on the right-hand side of the screen, and then what you otherwise see is, is a couple of trees, but more invasive buckthorn than anything. We'll be clearing that out. We'll be opening the site up for a new interface at Cass Avenue. The image below is what we anticipate the entrance to the community looking at, looking like. You can see, I've talked a lot about the landscape. You can see that they very much leaned into the landscape. The goal here is not to build and sell homes and go away, right? The majority of my clients do that. They're building a home, they're in a community for two years, they move on to the next one. We turn them and we burn them. That's not what this project is. This is a project that has an extraordinary amount of thought and investment as a result of it being a long-term commitment. Core and Harrison Street want to be here not just to develop, but as long-term owners and operators of this community, and that's why they've leaned in and I think provided you an exceptional development plan. So I've talked for a really long time, I apologize for that. There was a lot to get through, but I'd be happy to come back and answer questions as those pop up as well. Thank you. I really appreciate the time this evening.
Well, let's move on. He's going, one of the men is going to talk on landscaping. Tell us. Say again.
No, I guess not.
I don't think we'll speak of landscaping. I don't think so. Let's go straight to the public now.
I don't want to talk.
We'll have first staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to do my best to translate. When there's this much going on, I'm not necessarily going to try to repeat everything that the petitioner did. I'm going to highlight some details to the code and highlight some things that are important to staff as well. So I'm going to quickly go through each one of the requests. We can always elaborate with questions if I pass over anything that, that you want elaboration on. So the first request is a comprehensive plan amendment to redesignate this 52.8 acres from parks and open space to single-family detached residential. I think the petitioner covered their request. The only note that I just want to make on that is that the comprehensive plan calls it parks and open space and represents it as green, but when you actually read the definition, it does say private recreation. And so I think that this is not a public park, it was not a public park, but when you say parks and open space, you think public park. I think this was falling under the categorization of private recreation. So that's the only designation that I want to say, that when you get into the actual definition of it is, I think, why it was designated the way it was. Second, so this is a special use permit request. So ultimately, if you saw that zoning map, it showed this as a B3 district, which is a commercial district. In this commercial district, residences can be allowed as a special use. And what does a special use mean? It means it's not permitted by right, number one. It means that they just can't come in here with a residential development, meet the codes, and then we have to approve it. What it means is that we have the ability to examine the use and say, is it appropriate? So there are a lot of different measures. Some are categorized in what staff does, some are what we can think of while we're sitting here tonight. But basically, they provided several documents to try to show that this is a good product, a good product by showing us how it affects certain things. So one of the things they provided was a traffic impact study. So that traffic impact study was in your packets. It is very tactical. I assume they have a traffic expert here. So if you have questions on the traffic impacts, they can address those. Traffic and streets go together, so I'll quickly just touch on, they've shown two access points from Cass Avenue. All the roads are proposed to be private. So they are not proposed to be public roads, they are proposed to be private roads, which means that the owner of this property has to own and maintain those roads. That'll be important when I get to another topic here in a second. They provided a drainage memorandum that basically summarizes how they're going to address the stormwater on this property. This is a complex property. It developed as 110 acres when it started. As it developed, it changed the water dynamics, you know, and so there's several ponds, and a lot of these ponds kind of moved from one, one area to another. So it is a complex thing. Staff does have our village engineer here if there's questions on the village's interpretation of the stormwater. They provided a utility systems analysis. So what is that? It's what we commonly call a water model. So obviously, 239 residential units, we want to know if the water system that we have can accommodate these homes. The village didn't have its own data, so they said, well, you do some research and you tell us if our water system is appropriate. So they provided that to us. The draft plan development agreement, basically, a plan development is a contract with the village. I will discuss the plan development here a little bit more in detail, but basically, they provided a document to the village to say, we're a complicated project, your codes and ordinances don't think about this kind of project very well. We're probably going to have to negotiate some terms of how we run this, this property. So what you heard the petitioner say is, is staff was very adamant that, that we wanted to know not only the exterior finishes and what the quality of this development was, but we wanted to know what the interior finishes are. And that's primarily is, we want to know how this project would age, because obviously, if you're a single-family homeowner and you buy a nice house, you're going to figure out what your budget is when it comes time to replace your kitchen. We wanted to dictate when it comes time to do remodeling, that it maintains a consistent level that they're promising in the beginning. So that's part of the, the contract. They provided a draft of, of an SSA, that's a special service area. So what a special service area is, and, and the attorney can correct me because it's probably more technical than I understand, it's the ability to tax. Now, I want to speak that it's the ability to tax this property, no other properties. And why would we want to tax this property? That is, just in case the owners of this property don't maintain those private roads, we want to make sure that they never come to us as the village and say, hey, we need help. We can't maintain these private roads. If that ever occurs, their guarantee that they're proposing is that there's a dormant taxing area on this property that can be enacted, that then will give the village the ability to take taxes from the property owner to pay for those improvements if it comes to that point. So basically, it's a guarantee so that the village has never requested to step in and use village funds to keep these roads up. And the only reason, so the village was very sensitive to this. We've done this in a few instances, really with some condo associations, where the anticipation that the cost to redo one of these private drives was unanticipated, not planned for, and those, those homeowners were going to have to bear the burden of that cost. So they come to the village and say, hey, can we give you the road and you can take care of it? We wanted to make sure that, that situation, that the village never had to come to that situation. The, the guarantee that the petitioner is saying is, we'll, we'll put a special taxing area here so that if you have to enact it and tax to get the money to do that, it's here. Obviously, that, that is a fail-safe condition type thing. Did I say anything wrong about that, John?
Perfect.
Next, they're asking for a map amendment to rezone from the B3 special development district to a plan development overlay. So first off, that is not a request to change their zoning from B3 to something else. They remain the B3 district. What they're asking is that they can, we consider this a plan development. So what are the advantages or disadvantages of a plan development? Like I said, it's a contract with the village. So the village can ask for things that aren't written in code. So that minimum amenity level inside the house, that was something that the village asked for. It's not written in code anywhere that we have the right to do that, but because it's a contract, we can, we can ask for that. What it does is the plan development code says, okay, there are strict rules in zoning such as setbacks. If you're doing a plan development, some of those strict rules can be waived. So you're here the difference between a waiver and a variance. So they are asking for two waivers. What is the difference between a waiver and a variance? They're both requests to, to have exception to the rules. The difference is, if the plan development allows a waiver, it means that basically this, this group and the village board can, can say, well, is it a smart request? There are no tests to measure that against, it's just, is it a smart request? A variance is very different. You have to show a hardship, you have to show that your property is unique, you have to meet these tests of hardship to approve a variance. So, and usually variances are very specific to the property. So a quick example is, I own a home and I want to build an addition, and it says that my addition has to be 10 feet away from the property line. But the way my house was configured, the only place I can add this addition is in that 10 feet. Well, I'm going to ask the village for a variance to be at five feet. And the village is going to say, well, what is your hardship? And in that case, you would probably say, my hardship is, my house was built really awkwardly, the only place I can add this space is over here, and so you feel, or I feel in this case, that my hardship is the way my house was built. And it's unique to me, not everybody else has it. So that's the difference between a waiver and a variance. So when you do a plan development, there are certain things you can ask waivers for. So in this case, the way the code's written, the waivers they're requesting are to reduce the setback for legally subdivided internal parcels. That's a lot of words. Basically, there is a property line that is being proposed that is between this property and the hotel. The code, if you read it strictly, says there should be a 50-foot setback. But the code also says that if you process this as a plan development, you can request a waiver to that. So in this case, they would like to back some of those homes up to that property line, and they're saying, well, we'd like the homes to at least be 15 feet from that property line, or the patios outside the homes, five feet away. So that's what they're asking for. They're saying, we don't want to meet the 50 feet to this internal property line to the hotel, we would rather it be reduced. So that is the first request. The other request is a waiver to the minimum spacing between buildings. So the B3 district is very specific. We don't have any other districts in the village that are similar to this. Obviously, when the vision of this project came forward, it was a golf course and offices and a hotel. And they wrote a code in there that said, any of those buildings that are in this development should at least be 30 feet away from each other. So they were trying to create a standard. That doesn't fit really well into this project request, which is a bunch of homes that are fairly compact. So they said, well, side to side, we would like the homes to be 10 feet away from each other, and then rear yard to rear yard, if the homes are backing up to each other, they said, that would be 30 feet. But there are some conditions where you have a side yard and a rear yard, so if you're on a corner, where they, they'll get a bit closer. So basically, what they said is, we can't meet that 30 feet. And only as an example, in our standard residential districts, the standard setback for a home on a side yard is usually six feet. So if you had two homes next to each other on two single-family lots, that separation between them would typically be 12 feet. So just as an example, they're asking for 10. The normal, if this was a normal, single-family home-owned product, it would be 12. So they've asked for a waiver to that requirement. Other pieces of this plan development are that contract. So what's in, in that contract? There's an itemized list of approved development plans. So all the plans that the petitioner's shown to us, we kind of want to lock those in so they can't come in for permit and change everything. So one of that is a list of those plans as part of the approved documents. We itemize those variances and waivers that are being considered tonight. They outlined phasing, so how is this going to get built? Because obviously, they're going to build a house, the clubhouse might not be done yet, the, the park that they said people can go out and enjoy might not be built yet. So they've provided a phasing plan to say how they will construct this project over time. They've given guarantees to interior and exterior finishes. They've established the public and private improvements that they're going to do. They've established the clubhouse amenities and improvements because we want that to be there forever. They've established their easements and path connections. So they did show a path that goes to the hotel, they did show a path that goes through the park district property down to Blackhawk that can get people over to Ty Warner Park and to the middle school and high school. They've outlined development maintenance. They've outlined development maintenance because obviously, the village has concerns of, "Well, these people don't own the homes. How are you going to maintain their back patios? Can they fill it with playground equipment? Can they fill it with, you know, barbecue grills?" And they said, "Well, no, we're going to have a maintenance standard that we dictate to our residents." There's that SSA that I mentioned, basically, that they would establishment. The village has asked for some guarantee on a traffic light. So one of those entrances is directly across from Indian Trail. That is their primary entrance. Now, their traffic study has a lot of numbers in it, done by engineers based on traffic counts, and they say that a traffic light is not warranted. And what I mean by warranted is, this is a county right-of-way. It's not a village right-of-way. To get a traffic light installed, the county needs to see that so many cars are passing through in a certain amount of time. So their traffic study says that a traffic light is not warranted. But if you are here when those previous projects came through in 2016 and 2018, there was a lot of public comment that had worry about wanting a traffic light to, because it does affect traffic. So the village has said, "We want this written into the agreement. We want that you will guarantee that in 10 years, if the traffic gets so bad to warrant a traffic light, you will install it." So basically, the study says it's not warranted now. We're saying, "We want you to put a financial guarantee for 10 years with the county, and at some point, close to that 10 years, do another study. And if that study says a traffic light is warranted, then the developer was on the hook for developing it." That also means that in the 11th, that the 10th year, if it says, "No, no traffic light is warranted," and the 11th year it gets bad, they're off the hook by the 11th year. But they're basically on the hook for the first 10 years. And that was really, the village acknowledged that this project will come online slowly if it's approved. And we were worried that initially, it would be okay, and then once it gets fully built, it won't be okay. So, and then obviously, we have some outlines on development, operations, and management. So I'm looking this way because I got to have a big crowd, but I know that it's very rare when we have such an intricate plan development that comes before us. So even for everyone sitting up here, staff has tried to work with the petitioner to address as much as we could figure out would be impactful. So, and not to say that there aren't things that aren't addressed that aren't impactful that are up for discussion. And then, there are a few zoning ordinance requests. So basically, this means that that plan development language doesn't allow them to ask for a waiver. So in this case, the B3, which never really anticipated standalone, single-family homes, had a requirement for two things. And number one, it said that no front yard should be more than 50% driveway. And these houses, because they are narrow and compact, when you consider a two-car driveway, it makes the front yard pretty narrow. And it doesn't meet that 50% standard. So, and when I do my calculations, which are not nearly as technical as an engineer, I come up that the front yards would be, the actual landscaped area of the front yard would be 45 and 51% of the front yard. So if you're looking at it, at 50% is the minimum requirement, their least request is to 45%. The other thing it says, is it says that where you have any road, and this is whether it's a public road or a private road, where you have any road, it says you should have at least 25 feet from the road to the front of the building that is landscaped. In this case, they're asking for the houses to be 22 feet behind the sidewalk. So basically, they said 25 is what's required, 22 is what we're requesting. And the village was very specific that we wanted 22 because most modern-day cars are about 20 feet. And if you figure someone's going to be parking a car in the driveway, and I don't know if anyone's ever experienced this, where you see someone's car is overhanging the public sidewalk and you can't walk around it, the village was very specific to say, "We don't want your cars overhanging on the sidewalk or else people are walking in the street." So that's where the 22 comes from. Obviously, 25 is the requirement. They can't ask for a waiver, so in this case, they're asking for a variance. The other variances they're requesting are for the ground sign. So we discussed in the other case that there is the Hilton ground sign that is over on the other side of the entrance. On this side of the property, it is the Willowcrest Golf Course sign. It is a little bit of a different request. So the Hilton sign is already off-premise because the Hilton is on its own property, the golf course is on its own property, and the sign is sitting on golf course property right now. So that is a non-conforming sign as it sits. They asked for a variance to create its own lot and then guarantee that they can rebuild it. The difference here is, the Willowcrest Golf Course sign right now is sitting on the golf course. So the subdivision is creating a non-conformity because now the sign will be sitting on the property that is proposed to be developed. So it creates two anomalies. Number one, it creates the off-premise condition that we discussed. So it would be advertising a golf course that is not on the property. So that's the first variance request. The second variance request, I have to put my glasses down, is an additional ground sign. And you could say, "Joe, what do you mean additional?" Well, the residential development that they're proposing is only allowed one ground sign. Basically, one big entry sign that says, "Welcome to our development." This sign would be a second sign. The property is limited to one. So they basically said, "We need to ask for a second sign so that when the development comes forward, they can ask for that as well." And one of the last things they're requesting, let me look at my list. It is one of the last things, so I'll stop talking soon, is ultimately, the B3 district requires what's called a preliminary concept plan approval and final concept plan approval. They are requesting this at the same time. And the reason they're asking for it at the same time is the plan development agreement, which is pretty technical. If they came forward with a really wishy-washy preliminary plan, we couldn't talk about the specifics that we want in the legal contract. So they said, "Okay, we will come forward with a more finalized plan and ask for a preliminary and final." They're both the same plan together. Finally, I just want to highlight a couple of the details, I think, that may or may not be resolved at this point. First off, there was a finalized version of the plan development agreement. I'll look to my attorney. Have you had a chance to review the final version yet?
Parts of it, not all of it.
Okay.
Point out that the Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't vote specifically on the plan development agreement, which is the contract, as Joe pointed out. We'll discuss it and certainly answer any questions about the protections we've built into that.
Yes. I'm not going to go through the specifics of the number of homes. You've heard the petitioner do that. I'm going to go through some things that they didn't touch on. So they did say they had 25-foot and 30-foot wide homes. Basically, the width of the home is either 25 feet or 30 feet. They all have a two-car attached garage with two spaces in the driveway, so four spaces for each home. There are three- and four-bedroom models that vary from 1,700 square feet. I think he said 2,300 square feet. I think in the documents, it went up to 2,500 square feet. The number of three- and four-bedrooms is not locked in yet. So basically, as they go to permit, they will figure out what their most popular models are and say, "We want three bedrooms or four bedrooms." And right now, it's not locked in. So I can't tell you if they're all four-bedroom, if they're all three-bedroom, or if they're a mix. There's a 10-foot separation from side to side of the houses, a 15-foot separation of a side yard of a house to the rear yard of a house if you're on a corner, and a 30-foot separation if you're backyard to backyard. So the best way I can translate that is, you'd have a 15-foot backyard outside of the house. So they are fairly condensed. Pedestrian circulation, staff actually did want to make a point that the connection that goes through the park district property on the south is not ideal in staff's analysis of it. We've concerned issues over lighting and safety because it is a fairly narrow area that will have a 6-foot fence on one side, a very heavily vegetated portion on the other side, and you turn a corner. So it's, staff doesn't feel it's the ideal, but the petitioner has said it is their best effort for the connection. Landscape, so this group is used to very finalize landscape plans when things come before us. In this case, the B3 district allows more of a preliminary landscape, which they provided. The final landscape will have to be approved by the board. So when they do get their final landscape done, they will come in back to the board and show us their final landscape. So all of those little pocket parks that they mentioned, those will have to come back before the board for final approval. Parking requirements, so there's two issues on parking here. There's a clubhouse requirement, and then there's the single-family homes requirement. The clubhouse, it's actually very, it's written very loose in the code. It basically says, "As long as they provide enough parking to the satisfaction of the planning and zoning, that then it's okay." It has to, at a minimum, have enough spaces, one parking space for every two employees. So as they described, the clubhouse would have 30 spaces. So what is for the planning and zoning to consider is, do you think 30 spaces is enough spaces? The other thing is single-family homes. And the code is a bit looser on single-family homes. The way it reads on single-family homes is, there is no minimum requirement for parking spaces. So as I said, they provided four for every home. What they did do is, they said, "Well, you know, multifamily dwellings, so apartment buildings, are required to do 2 and 1/2 parking spaces for every dwelling unit that's three bedrooms or more." So if this was a standalone apartment building, that's what the requirement would be. So they just, for comparison, provided, they said, "Well, with 239 homes and that requirement of 2 and 1/2 parking spaces, this development would require 598 spaces." So if this were one apartment tower, we would require 598 spaces. With four spaces in every home, they said, "We've got 956 spaces provided." They have additional parking, mostly off-street is in that southern portion, which is a bit denser. There are 33, like, head-in parking spaces off of the private road there that are provided. They have to manage them and how people park in them. And then they did say that there could be on-street parking. And so we had them provide a parking exhibit. So in your materials, you'll see a parking exhibit because we wanted to know where you could park cars. Because if you're good at math and you know a 25-foot wide house with 5 feet on each side of it only gives you 35 feet, and if you've got a driveway that's 18 feet wide, you can't really fit a car in front of that house. It's not like a standard subdivision. And we recognized that and said, "Well, okay, where are you going to park these?" So they provided a parking plan that said, "Well, really, it's where, you know, the detention ponds are and such, where there are no houses." So they showed us where they could accommodate additional spaces. Those would be additional 76 spaces. But they are agreeing that there will be no overnight parking on those private streets, just like in Westmont. So basically, those 76 spaces are only accessible in the daytime. So if I'm looking at this as to total spaces during the day, they've got 1,095 spaces. Or at night, when you can't park in those other areas, they've got 1,019 spaces. I know parking is always a topic. That's why I wanted to address it. Density, they do meet the village density standard. I think initially, when they came forward with a product that had some single-family and Suntown homes, they were at 320 units. We looked at the land area. We looked at the requirements for our single-family homes. We discounted the roads that they were using and backed that out. And when you do all those math calculations, it says you can have no more than 239 units on this property to meet the density standard. And lastly, I wanted to speak to some of our code that really isn't mentioned in what anything that the petitioner does, but this is some of the background information that the code does for everyone on this side to consider this project. We have what are called required land improvements. And what does that mean? Basically, we translate to, we call that impact fees. So basically, there are many districts that overlay this property that are affected by a development like this. The two primary ones are the park district and the school district. So our code has a calculation method based on the number of homes and number of bedrooms in each home. And it is to give us general guidance to understand, number one, the general impact of this project, and then give something to that district. So the first, the way the code is written is, it says that if the school district or park district want land, they have the right to get land. And it's a calculation method based on, well, how many dwelling units are there and how much land do you want? And the best way I like to relate this to is, when Westmont was just village hall and it was all undeveloped around us, and a developer came in and said, "I want to build 60 homes over here," they said, "Well, we need a school to serve these new residents. How much land can we have for a school? Or how much land can we have for a park?" So that's the way the code's written. But the code basically says, if those districts don't want land, then it translates to money. And so there is a calculation method, and the numbers I'm going to give are based on a 50-50 mix of three- and four-bedrooms. Obviously, these change based on how many bedrooms they have. So in terms of population, it anticipates that this development would have about 998 persons total. 508 of those 998 would be adults. So that means that there would be children. And it says that preschool age, so zero to four years, so before you're in school, it anticipates 108 children. It anticipates 173 in grades K through 5, so elementary. It anticipates 97 in the junior high level, and it anticipates 111 at the high school level. So that's the anticipated. Obviously, our calculation methods could be right or wrong, but this is what our code says. And based on the land area that's required, translated to a dollar amount, and these dollar amounts change with number of bedrooms as well.
I got to take my medication.
We appreciate you coming out.
I worked on the golf course for 17 years, and we've been residents here at Westmont for over 26 years. And I thought it would be interesting just to see what some of the thoughts are of the residents that live here. But I'm sorry, I had to take my medication.
We're glad you came out.
Well, thank you.
So for schools, the dollar amount it's anticipating, based on that 50-50 mix, is about $942,000 that the developer would have to turn over to the school district if this was approved. For the park district, it comes out to about $700,000. So in both these cases, those districts said, "We don't necessarily want land. We'd rather have the cash to infuse into our existing facilities." So this is for everyone just to understand impact. That's why we use the common term "impact fees," because it's trying to accommodate impact on these districts. With that, I'm done talking, but I can talk a lot more based on your questions, and I'm always here to answer those.
All right. Thank you, Jill. And before we open this up to the public, I think village attorney would like to have a word.
Just a couple of comments. When Mr. Hennerfind mentioned that the village requested certain things from the developer, certain guarantees, certain improvements to be made, et cetera, that's village staff's job to try and make this project, if it were to be approved, the best project it can be and to protect surrounding property owners and the public in general. The attorney, Attorney Whitaker, also mentioned that certain enhancements were made to the stormwater requirements and the walking paths, et cetera, at the request of the village. Again, those were requests solely by village staff, looking at this project. The elected officials of the village and this commission have not had any interactions with the developer, have not reviewed the plans, have not provided input. So when reference is made to the village, it's solely village staff negotiating this in the event that it's approved. I just want to make that clear. Mr. Hennerfind talked about what a plan development- Mr. Hennafind talked about what a plan development is, and that certain waivers can be requested from the zoning ordinance for a planned development. And I also want to point out that a planned development allows those waivers when there's a trade-off of benefits. And it says things like, when there is open space provided, as an example, or certain amenities, or certain features, that those can be offset by these waivers that allow for things like greater, or lesser setbacks, et cetera. And in this case, I think they're preserving a strand, a grove of oak trees, providing these pocket parks, eco nodes, walking trails, et cetera. I think the best way to envision that is, when you consider, there are some cluster communities where they really pack in the homes, but they provide a ring of green space around the home. So instead of having space between the homes, they offset the density of the homes by green space around it. And the question, I guess, for this commission and the village board is, have they provided enough offsets by way of amenities, open space, et cetera, for the compactness of this development? And Joe, I think you covered the other points I had, so that's all I have at this point.
Staff appreciates keeping us aligned, so.
Thank you. All right, at this point, we'll go to the public. I hope that everyone who intends to come up and address the board has already signed in, and we can keep it moving that way. Would anyone like to take a five-minute break before we start, or shall we get right into it? All right. Do we have a system, or people signed up, or is Jamie helping, or is it just?
I, I think my recommendation would be, is if you want to call up those folks that are representing a group, that what you, I think you said you'd give them 10 minutes.
All right, good point.
I, I don't know if, if John has a preference, but.
That's a good idea.
Yep. So let's, let's start. Do we have anyone who's going to be speaking for a group of? You're first.
And I will just iterate, since I'm, I'm the timekeeper, so I will just call time and when you hit 10 minutes, so.
I promise I won't hit 10 minutes.
Good evening.
My name is Rachel Robert. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Day &amp; Robert. We are located in 300 East Fifth Avenue, Suite 365 in Naperville. Together with my partner, Scott Day, we have the privilege of representing the residences of Oak Brook Hills Condominium Association before you tonight. We have submitted in the materials before you, I believe that Mr. Hennafind distributed those to, to each of you all, a March 1, 2023 letter that we have prepared on behalf of the association. I am simply here tonight to simply read it into the record, to reiterate our position on the pending application to the chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, if you have not had a chance to review the letter tonight. So very briefly, again, it's dated March 1, 2023. Dear Chairman Carmichael and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Day &amp; Robert PC represents the residences of Oak Brook Hills Condominium Association. Our client representatives have been in communication with Russ Whitaker and his client Core Spaces, the contract purchaser of roughly 52.8 acres of what is now known as the Willow Crest Golf Club. Core Spaces has been working since last year to obtain entitlements from the village of Westmont to develop roughly 239 units of single-family homes on what is currently a portion of the 18-hole golf course. Attached to this letter is a draft dated February 21, 2023, Grant of Conservation Right and Easement and Restrictions, that has been collaboratively processed with input from the ownership of the Willow Crest Golf Course, ownership of the hotel, the Westmont Park District, and the village of Westmont. As drafted, this conservation easement has the association's approval and would create a statutory conservation right under the Real Property Conservation Rights Act, 765 ILCS 120 0.01 et cetera, and would preserve the front nine holes of the Willow Crest Golf Course as passive or limited active recreational permanent open space in perpetuity. The proposals before the Planning and Zoning Commission include a preliminary five-lot subdivision of property that makes up two of the three lots within the common law unified land plan known as Oak Brook Hills. These proposals currently contemplate recordation of the conservation easement, development of 239 single-family homes on Lot 2 of the new subdivision, amendments or restatements of easements previously recorded as part of the common law unified plan, and also area-wide drainage modifications. With recordation of the approved conservation easement, the association supports the preliminary subdivision proposal and the proposed redevelopment of the back nine holes of the Willow Crest Golf Course into 239 single-family homes. Perpetual preservation of the front nine holes of the golf course by way of the conservation easement is a critically important open space protection that will benefit the viability of the hotel and the property values of the residences of Oak Brook Hills. At this point in time, the association is not able to approve the engineering or grading plans for the proposed drainage modifications set forth in the Kinley Horn Drainage Memorandum dated January 25, 2023, nor is the association in a position to address the sufficiency of the draft reciprocal easement and operating agreement prepared by Greenberg Tourist LLP. This is because the proposed drainage plan was just received on February 27, 2023, and will need to be reviewed by Spaceco Inc., the professional engineering firm retained by the association. Similarly, the draft reciprocal easement and operating agreement was also first received on February 27, 2023, and addresses some complex legal issues that have not yet been vetted by the association. The association remains optimistic that these unresolved issues can be addressed in due course, and we are pleased that the critically important issue of recordation of a suitable and durable conservation easement has been successfully negotiated. With this conservation easement in place, the planned preliminary subdivision and preliminary residential development is ripe for review and approval. The association supports these aspects of the project contingent upon engineering and easement amendments that are acceptable to the association. Thank you for your consideration, very truly yours, signed by my partner, Scott M. Day.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would speak for a group? Good evening, sir.
My name is Adam Kingsley. I represent the Royal Hills Club and the Indian Trail Townhome Associations. I do have some things to say, but I, I'd like to wait, I'd like to pass my time, and let's get to the residents, and then maybe later on in the evening, after some of the residents have spoken, I can give you my presentation.
Anyone else who is speaking for a group? Okay. Now it's individuals. Who wants to go first?
My name is Mary Maselli, and I am a resident and homeowner of the Indian Trails Townhome Community on Cass Avenue. I wish to inform you of my concerns with the proposed development to be built at the Willow Crest Golf Course. One of my biggest concerns is the sheer volume of rental properties to be placed on such a small area. 2021 statistics show that for rental properties in Westmont versus suburbs in the area, as well as Illinois and the United States overall, shows a disproportionate number of rental properties already. The 21 statistics show that Oak Brook has a 10% rental properties. Downers Grove, now I need my glasses, has a 25% rentals. The state of Illinois has 35%. The United States is 37, and we are already in Westmont at 48%. Adding 239 more homes is going to push us way over that. As you know, homeownership is the cornerstone of a stable, law-abiding neighborhood. The more transient residents you introduce to the equation, the more instability you introduce. As a law enforcement professional with 38 years of experience, I can attest that's the truth. There are several infrastructure issues that also worry, worry me. We are built on a marsh-type land, which has a difficult time absorbing water when it rains or the snow melts. To take away that much open air space with buildings and blacktop would, would probably lead to flooding and drainage issues. Then there is the traffic concern. To add that much traffic and to introduce more traffic signals, if that was to be done, would likely bottleneck traffic on one of the main north-south arteries of Westmont. It's a two-lane going in both directions. If somebody's constantly sitting in a turning lane, waiting to turn, if there is no light, then traffic's going to back up. And you'll have a traffic light right at 35th, then at the turn, you have it at Willow Crest Golf Course, and then at the turn, you're going to have it at Cass and Indian Trail. That's three lights in, in not very much distance. I, I believe that will cause a major bottleneck. Also, I'm really concerned because an internet search of Core shows that they have experience in basically campus-type housing. They're trying to start six projects of this magnitude all across the country in six different cities, and they have no proven track record for anything other than what I can find on the internet is housing, campus housing, which is a totally different animal. I don't believe that they're, the location that they're trying to put this in can command the types of rent that they're looking for. It's not a walkable area. There's not restaurants or bars that people can walk to. It's, it's, it's not close to the train station, so it's not for a commuter. The three-bedroom, two-baths right here at Quincy Station, which is in the downtown area and right in front of the train station, they're only going for $3,500. So I don't understand where they think they're going to get $4,000. We don't have a school in the area, so it's not like four guys are going to rent the apartment, and they're each going to take a bedroom, because there's no schools in the area. They're talking about empty nesters. Well, I don't know, I'm a, close to an empty nester, and the last thing I want is stairs. If you look at their plans, even when they were talking about moving a bedroom to the first floor, the laundry's on the second floor. So I don't know that you're going to get as many empty nesters as you think you're going to get, especially at a price point of $4,000, especially with the economy the way it is. So my concern is, have you discussed, or is there anything saying, what happens if they don't rent? Are they going to sit vacant? Are they going to fall into disrepair? Are they going to sell them to HUD, who will turn it into public housing? I mean, there's a lot of questions to be asked here if they can't get someone to pay $4,000 for these apartments. It, it's just, I think we have a lot more questions that need to be answered before we can move forward. But again, how many rental units? We're already past the national average. I, I understand we all need, you know, tax incentives and, and things to keep the place moving, but I don't understand why we can't have homeownership-type situations where it's more stable. That's just my thought, and, thank you.
Thank you. That's not necessary.
How are you? I'm Donna Sutton Shalinski, and I live in the Indian Trails Townhomes. First of all, I'd like to thank the sponsoring company for hosting a gathering we had over Hilton, and they went through everything, and they gave us a, a complete layout of what I thought was really interesting. But first of all, I'd like to express my opinion of how the project does not fit in our community, and why I am totally against it. The building of ICE, at that time, was 280 rental homes were not in hand in our community. I have been a landlord for over 20 years, and I know firsthand how it is to rent homes. I have rented to doctors, PhDs, and engineers, and it does not matter their education level or income level. Disasters, leaving them need a total renovation, and $4,000 a month rental does not guarantee that tenants will respect your homes. In fact, I had a doctor one time rent one of my homes. A PhD, and you would not believe the condition that house was when she left. In my opinion, the homes of four bedrooms, two and a half baths, two-car garage are very, are very close together, approximately less than 20 feet and have zero lot lines. I feel most tenants will not be long-term tenants, and the turnover will be continual, not what we want in our community. Indian Trail just passed a restriction that no new owners can rent out their homes. That does say something about the area. Therefore, we are not happy about the rental situation at Oak Brook Hills. I was told there will be no parks for any, for any children which might reside in this project, just small land areas. I was told they could use Warren Park. Really? I have children in our community that will not walk over to Warren Park, and that's just a few blocks, and they throw the balls in the neighborhood. It's not, we've only got a few, but I can see where this could be a problem. Besides, excuse me, besides of all my major concerns, there's a traffic that will be generated from the future 268 homes that will be right opposite of Indian Trail exit. Now, when you come out now, now sometimes we have two and three cars waiting to turn. So I can see when they're coming out this way, we're turning that way, it's going to be a mess. What happened to the exit to Oak Brook Hills? Did money talk, or was it removed? One thing that I was wondering, when, when you said that they were going to have 10 years to put in the stoplight, I think 10 years is entirely too long. I think that they should do, if they're going to do it, personally, I didn't think they should do it now. But 10 years is too long, and I think they should have a mandatory thing of two years or five years, and the builders should have to pay for it, no matter what. That's my major concern, is the traffic and the, the people, I don't think they're going to get people that are going to stay there that long, because they're going to be transient, and they're come and go, and we don't really need that in our community. I have been at the Indian Trails Townhome for 30 years, so I'm looking for stable people to come and to stay. What kind of, what kind of leases are they going to give? Are they going to give six months, a year, two years, five years? What kind of leases are they going to give? I haven't heard that. So I would appreciate if you could elaborate on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, I've, I've got a procedural question. There's going to be a lot of questions asked during the course of this hearing, and they're entitled to answers to those questions. So we don't lose track of each question over the course of this hearing, which may go over several nights. Maybe there should be an attempt to answer the questions as, after this speaker is done. And, and that way, we don't have repeated questions, and we don't forget what questions were asked.
But just from the staff, you're saying, at that point?
No, from staff or the petitioner. So for example, I know, Joe, there was a question about rentals and the length of rentals, and we addressed that in the planned development agreement, that short-term rentals of less than six months, I believe, were not allowed?
I believe that, but I'd like the petitioner to correspond that. So we did ask for a prohibition of short-term rentals, specifically because we didn't want an Airbnb-type scenario. And I believe that the latest version of the planned development, they obligated that there'd be nothing less than six months. Russ, you can correct that, if, if I misstated that.
So before you speak, if you don't mind, if we allow the petitioner to come up and answer some of those questions that, that were just asked.
I want to, I have no problem. I'll step over.
So on the, on that leasing issue, I think, I think the intent is that we have absolutely no issue with, with a prohibition on leases less than six months. I, I think the vast majority of leases will be written a year or longer. When, on a national standard for build-to-rent communities, they're seeing longer occupancies than you would in a, in a traditional multifamily environment. I've seen numbers ranging from three years to five years. I've seen numbers ranging from three years to five years as the typical term that a tenant stays in a build-to-rent community. One of the reasons that we want to maintain the ability to do a six-month lease is we know that there's folks in transition, right? You've got a slide on it. There's people who are building a new house. And so they may, my in-laws had their home flood over the winter. They were out of their home for six months, needing a place to stay. So here's an opportunity for them to go from a single-family home to another single-family home on a short-term basis while their home is being renovated. So I think there's some reason for accommodating some short-term tenants, but they would be not less than six months, and on average, we think the lease term will be three to five, the average stay will be three to five years. Did you, like, there's a...
It's in there. It prohibits rentals for less than six months.
Yes. So that was one question. I mean, I guess I've got a couple of other from the last two speakers. Do you want us to just kind of run through those as well? Okay. So I think Mrs. Miselli talked about the disproportionate number of rentals. I couldn't tell you exactly what the number of rentals are in Westmont. What I can tell you is that from a zoning standpoint, we don't talk about ownership versus rental. If you look at the Westmont code, you're not going to find the term owner in code, because we don't legislate ownership of a unit through zoning. When I cited the provision in the comp plan in my presentation, the comp plan specifically says, when we're talking about different types of residential uses, we're talking about multifamily, we're talking about attached, we're talking about detached. We're never talking about ownership. It goes on to say that, in fact, there should be different types of ownership, both for single-family, attached, and for multifamily. So I think that's a very important point about the legalities here and the impositions and what is appropriate to consider as part of a zoning petition. We heard someone say they don't want a traffic light. We heard somebody say they want a traffic light. We have, to be clear, we have submitted a letter to DuPage County. We have asked DuPage County to allow us to install a traffic light. We're waiting on a response from that at this point in time. We expect DuPage County to say that they will not allow us to install a traffic light. They only allow a traffic light to be installed when it is warranted pursuant to prescribed standards that are set forth in our study. It's not warranted, frankly. It's not really close to being warranted. So this isn't like a, well, if we're at 100 units versus 200 units, it's going to make a difference. We ran the counts based on all 230 units being occupied five years into the future. We incorporated background growth for additional development that would occur in the region, and we're still far short of the requirement. So we think that while we are ready, willing, and able to commit the funds to construct a light, we do not believe that in the near term, we will be granted the right to construct a light. Core Experience, I'm going to skip that one, and I'll ask Joe to come up and address that real quick, and let me just go through the others, though. What happens if they don't rent? I think this is, it's no different than any residential project, right? If they don't rent at the price we're projecting, then we're going to suffer economic harm as a result of it. We're going to get lesser rents. We're going to continue to rent the units, and we're going to continue to operate the community, but our projected returns are not going to meet the pro forma that we've put together with our partner. So if they, they will rent. There's only a question of, at what price are they going to rent? We saw the homes in Oakwood that have historically rented. We saw homes that are in the rental market today. We know that DuPage County has a short supply of rentals, and it is a, there is generally speaking, a line of people waiting for rentals in DuPage County. Core has 4,000 units under management. They have extensive experience working with renters. They are entirely comfortable with this environment. They will have onsite management. You know, John Burns' letter spoke to the difference between a professionally managed facility and a mom-and-pop-owned facility. This will be a professionally managed facility with onsite personnel, and we will be monitoring what's happening in those units. So we are perfectly comfortable with the capacity to fill and manage our renters. I think that covers what I had in the way of questions so far. So I will ask Joe Gatto, who's with Core Spaces, to speak just very briefly about Core Experience.
I'm just going to, I'll be two more minutes. Go ahead. Two things I just wanted to mention was speak on our track record.
Your name, sir?
My name is Joe Gatto with Core Spaces. Core Spaces is one of the most prolific developers in the country in terms of, you know, transaction volume per year. In other words, we are building more valuable real estate than... And we do do a lot of student housing. There really is more traditional apartments that happen to be serving students near college campuses. And in addition to that, we do also build conventional housing that serves non-students. So in Boulder, Colorado, you know, steps from Pearl Street, for anyone that's been there, we're building 150 units of true conventional housing, which will not be marketed to students. Portland, Oregon, we built 400-plus units in a 20-story high-rise, mixed-use of the CVS and public parking component on the ground floor. In addition to that, the founders of Core Spaces were one of the largest developers of single-family homes and conventional housing in Chicagoland area, primarily focused, though, in downtown Chicago. So through LG Construction and Development, the L. V. Lipton, the founder of our firm, who's heavily involved in this development and as well as the whole platform. LG Development is the premier luxury single-family home developer to this day in places like Lincoln Park, Wicker Park. In addition to that, they were the first developers in Chicago to utilize the TOD ordinance that was implemented a little over a decade ago, and they built developments that you can see to this day that are very successful at the corners of North Avenue in Milwaukee, Division in Milwaukee, in the Wicker Park neighborhood of Chicago, which are located on the Blue Line train stop. Highly successful developments, highly respected individuals within the community. We have a litany of construction professionals who are building some of the most dynamic and largest important projects in the country that will change the skylines of major cities like Berkeley, California, and Raleigh, North Carolina. We're really excited to be able to do so in our backyard on a much smaller scale, obviously, with this development. I did want to just add one more thing. I think that, I think it's important, some of that is from the community. I grew up here. My family still lives here. I patron the restaurant at the hotel, and I just wanted to mention that this location is walkable, very walkable. It is walkable to the restaurant, in the hotel, to the Nine Hole Golf Course, to a, you know, DuPage County gem in Ty Warner Park, as well as a litany of retail restaurants and grocery stores along Ogden Avenue. I myself live about a half, or not live, my family lives about a half-mile away. I personally walk to the site, so I can attest, walking about a half-mile is definitely within reason. And we're excited for a number of reasons. I'll let other people speak. I know I've run a little bit longer than my two minutes, but thank you for my time.
My name is Joseph Hearn Surick. I currently live at 865 North Cass Avenue, which is the Cordia Senior Residence in Apartment 306. I also own a home in Westmont at 224 East Naperville Road. So I've been a Westmont resident for almost 50 years, and just like to make a comment that the issue, I think, for us at Cordia is the density of what they're planning. That I understand you want to get your value out of your land, but that's going to be an awful lot of people up there. So, and I have not heard from, you know, any of the other officials, you know, are we adequately staffed with the fire department, police department to provide for these type of facilities? Are we adequately staffed with the village departments to manage what they will need to manage with it? Things like that need to be addressed and raised as concerns from my perspective, so we're ready when it comes. We are capable of managing these type of facilities. And many of these type of facilities do require additional police unit protection, unfortunately, versus the more resident-owned facilities. I would really prefer that the units be not rented, that they would be sold to individuals as individual homes and owned by the homeowner rather than owned by a corporation and rented. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Got any questions? I'm sorry.
I say, thank you. Mr. Chair, I think he brought up two items that I should, staff should respond to. So this project, when it went through its review cycle, was sent to both the police chief and fire chief. Neither one of those had comments on the project that said that they would need additional. I'm not saying that they, basically, they said they had no comments on the project. And the other thing I want to emphasize is, there is a nominal impact fee that is assessed to the village in this, so it's not nearly the same as the school district. It comes out to about $50,000, and that is the village's impact fee that it feels it assesses. This type of project needs to be assessed to the village.
And that covers things like police-fire, public works?
I don't think it's defined. It's just, it's a municipal impact fee. When it has that type of impact, I think the village has its discretion on how it uses those funds, so.
Got it. Okay, next.
It's getting late, and my wife would like me home. My name is Dan Charleston. I have been a Westmont resident for 32 years. I call this place home. There are so many friends and people I have seen and worked with over the years here, and I just really appreciate seeing them. Harold, it's great to see you as well tonight. The thing I will also share is that I am a 38-year professional in the commercial real estate space, having spent the first 13 years being involved in institutional ownership, on the institutional ownership side, and the last 25 years as a commercial real estate mortgage banker, particularly in the multifamily space. And so both in terms of conventional debt, as well as what's referred to as agency debt, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac and things of that nature. And I just want to thank the presenters here tonight. This is the first full presentation I've seen of the project, and I'd also like to thank whoever sent out the flyer, right? I would not have known about tonight's meeting, mostly because I'm horribly lazy about doing that stuff right now. But there's stuff in there that jumped out at me that, you know, was either misunderstood or misstated, and so I just wanted to come tonight and see the presentation. The two things that are, the two things that are top of mind that I wanted to add was As an example of the viability of build-to-rent, single-family, or build-to-rent, attached product, that truly is, and it was referenced earlier, that truly is a growing and substantial part of the multifamily space right now. Not only in terms of equity that's chasing it, and they mentioned that they have a $1.5 billion partnership with a company called Harrison Street, which is based in Chicago. Core Spaces is based in Chicago, and these are institutional public pension funds. Many of your pensions will be invested in assets just like this, without your knowledge, mostly, right? But these are incredibly viable and important aspects to how people choose to live as renters. Move-downs are real, and people who can't afford down payments on homes but want to live in a home are real. And so these types of communities provide that outlet. As to the density thing, I also appreciated the slide that showed the units per acre. This one appropriately references a couple of things. The village approved up to 299 units in what is referred to as a Texas wrap-type project, seven stories high, basically on the parking lot of the hotel at one point. You know, and I don't know what the unit-per-acre count there was, but it had to be approaching 30 or higher. This is four-and-a-half acres, four-and-a-half units per acre. The apartment complex across the street, not Indian Trails, but the apartment complex formerly known as Brook Hill, presently known, I think, as Arrive. It was listed on the slide at 16 and change per acre. Let me give you a different frame of reference for that. There's 408 apartment units in that project. It is approximately 22 or 23 acres. It is less than half the size of the proposed development, and the units in the proposed development are approximately half the number that are in that apartment complex. This is not a high-density complex. It will actually feel much closer to Oakwood than it will to an apartment complex. Again, I'm here tonight, I served on the school board in District 201 from 2009 to Just a wonderful time to serve the community. When I entered the, when I entered the school board, our enrollment was around 1,500 in the district, across five buildings. Today, that enrollment number is 1,346. In the high school, just as a simple example, today we have graduating classes of 90. Not long ago, that was 120, eminently manageable inside these facilities, right? And so at 30 per class, that's 120 kids, and you, and Joe appreciated your numbers. You referenced that there might be as many as 110 high school-age kids.
I hate that you're complimenting me, but it's time.
I'd like to just thank the presenters, and thank you for your guy's service, and wish you well.
All right. Thank you. Joe, do we address this flyer that he... Okay.
Hi, my name is Jessica Zabrowska. I live in Oakwood. I'm an 11-year resident of Westmont and have kids in the school, the park district. We're really trying to make this our home and have no intentions of leaving. We like the town because of the families, the kids that have stick around. I mean, our neighborhood was built in the '70s, a lot of turnover. Now, there's so many families and so many more looking for homes like that. And even in our community, a lot of our lots are, in our opinion, small. To make that lot smaller and those homes closer together and rentals is the opposite direction that the community feels Westmont needs. I mean, I can't speak for everyone in the community, but I can speak to who I speak to on a regular basis, moms in the community, people within the school, the neighborhood. The last thing anyone wants is more rental properties and an overly dense, the most dense out of any of our surrounding neighbors, Claridin Hills, Willowbrook, Downers Grove, Hinsdale. We are 500 times more, not 100 times, 500 per acre denser than any of the surrounding properties, the communities. I mean, I think it's irresponsible to add to that number. I know that people have spoke to denser properties in the past. I think we're learning from mistakes. I think that this is a mistake. I think it's, maybe it's a great community, and it has great potential, but it's not the right spot, and it's not what I think our community needs. I'm not saying that, you know, they're not trying to make it fit into this spot. We're not Denver. We're not Portland. We're not Chicago. We're Westmont. We're a small town who wants to have a small-town feel. We love it. We want our neighbors. We want our neighbors to stay. This is the opposite of what I think our community needs, because I love this community. And I very much agree with everyone else's comments. I think it was very eloquently put, the first two comments, people that came out here, very, you know, a lot of other points against the development, but from my point of view, those are my concerns. And additionally, too, I think the point that the schools, they're not overly crowded, but I think transient members to the school would definitely add a higher cost than families that would stay in the community. Kids coming in and out of the school district, that costs a lot more money. Kids coming in and out, it's just a different feel, and I just don't think it's what Westmont needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I've spoken before. My name is Jennifer Suisse. I live at Indian Trail, just for a couple of years now, originally from downtown. And so I think you already know how I feel. And so I think you already know how I feel about everything, and thank you for presenting. However, I don't feel also that it's the right fit. I think, you know, as elected officials of Westmont, you have a duty, to all of us, to see what is of the best interest to Westmont and to the residents. I don't believe that another rental situation is the answer. I think our, our communities around us are watching us, Hinsdale, Downers Grove, Oakbrook, and wondering why we don't have more homeownership. To have more apartments, more rental properties, however nice it's going to look, or hopefully it's going to look, is just another indicator that we're not up to the task of stability. And why is that? I don't want to be looked at as like that. Do you? I mean, do you want Westmont to look at as some downgraded rental area, and that's it? I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's fair to the homeowners. I think, and I have to go through my notes, because I've been standing for two and a half hours, so forgive me, but this is going to have a long-term effect and impression on Westmont, some that are entirely unseen to you right now, and some that, you know, you're just never going to know. So I think it's really important, if you remove, if you move forward with a residential property on these grounds, this is your chance to have more buyers in the area, more stability, and something for residents to be proud of. Why can't a preserve, a preserve type of a community be developed on this area? Less structures, more green. Make it into something that's more coveted for the area, something that is, you know, evolved, yes, for the area, but it's going to be something that enriches it, enhances the area. You know, and again, going back to what Mary said about, what happens if these don't rent? I'll tell you what's going to happen. The prices are going to drop. Then you're going to be attracting some characters to the area, okay? And so there's going to be more instances of police and just more overall types of so, social instances that you don't want. One of these examples, I think I cited before at another meeting in Oakbrook Terrace, they developed a beautiful building. Rents were about $3,000. They had a great community room, everything like that. And guess what happened? They had 300 units. They could not fulfill all of the units. They dropped the prices. They changed the name, and now there's all kinds of nonsense that goes on there. The police are there very often. I don't want that across the street from me. I don't want, I don't want that anywhere around here. And the connection from this property to the hotel, I think, is very unsafe. You know, this trail meandering back and forth, I don't think that's safe at all, and I don't think I'm the only one. I also don't think it's right to have two entrances to this area off of Cass Avenue. How is that fair to any of us that live at Indian Trail or any of your surrounding homes? It's a lot of pars. If you put a traffic light there, again, which some people may think is needed, you're going to have exhaust, you're going to have noise, horns blowing, trash being thrown out the windows. Those are real things you need to think about, right? So it's not that we're against something happening. I think it's where, we want it to be the right thing. We want it to be, this is a big step for the area. It's a very valuable piece of land, and it just has to be the right thing. So really consider that, please, when you're, you're thinking about this and, you know, thinking of Westmont 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. I would point out for the record that these commissioners are not elected officials. We are appointed by the village, and we serve at the pleasure of the mayor.
And the board.
And what?
And the board.
And board.
I'm Ed Worst, live in Westmont. And first I have a question, if you could answer. On the density side that you have.
Please speak to the microphones, sir.
Yeah. On the den, on the density side that you have. Got one going this way or that way. You came up with a density of something like 4.7 units per acre. Does that include the entire area, or does it just account for where the houses are?
Fifty-two acres.
Which? Because that makes a difference in the density, housing density. It could go, maybe three times 4.7.
So, this, this is the slide being referenced, so we've got two different numbers on here. We've, we've really only referenced one of them. The, the development parcel, which is Lot 2 of the subdivision from Case 059, result, if we look at just Lot 2, it results in a density of 4.5 units per acre. If we were to look at this and say, we're setting aside preserved open space in perpetuity that doesn't exist today on the remainder of the golf course, the density would drop to 2.3 units per acre.
Just to make sure I understand.
Is this the area, acres, sure? Everything except for these two parcels, right? Okay. And so that's 2.3, and that's the 2.3. Okay. So, just the, for the areas. Correct. So that would double.
If I look at, if I look at this.
Please, please, to the microphone.
Just to be real clear, it's, it's four and a half is, to your question, the area that we spoke about earlier, to the west, just the development area, is the four and a half. If you were to take the whole thing, like your hypothesis, that's actually drops it to 2.3.
Okay. Okay, that answers my question. I agree with many of the comments about traffic, and the, it does look awfully dense, but it concerns me, and I think this is along the lines of the last person, concerns me that we're trading, I'll call it green space, a golf course, for 239 units, right up against Cass, well, in that, in that area over there. The, I think I read in some of the documents that the Oakbrook Hotel said they wanted, they didn't want to look at, they didn't say it this way, they didn't want to look at all those houses. They wanted some pleasant view for the people who stay there, out on the patio, eating outside. They didn't want them looking at the houses that we're talking about building. I, I don't want to look at them either. And finally, given those concerns and the others you've heard tonight, how does this benefit the residents of the village of Westmont? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Royal Hills condominium. I bought it in about February of 2021. So I'm a short-term resident, but a 45-year resident of Claritin Hills. So I'm familiar with the area, familiar with the traffic problems, the school systems, and I can hardly agree that with the people that responded before me, we have to have a concern there. I wish the gentleman from, that spoke in the seat next to you identified where he is from in Westmont, because that comment could be construed differently if you're right across the street, like the people at the other condominium. I have three comments. Number one, gentleman, attorney, mentioned that the hotel or the owner could not afford to maintain the golf course. I don't know how much they paid for that golf course, but it was open land. So to me, saying, I need to put 239 units out there, speaks that, okay, I'll take profit over what should be quality. And in the previous meeting, I believe they mentioned, the golf course has been making money. They could set it up as two nine-hole courses. They obviously want to keep one nine-hole because of the condominium owners or the town host, excuse me, the townhouse owners that are currently there. The other point, it says, single-family residential. Who's going to, going to control the definition of single? Will we have multiple families occupying a four-bedroom home with different results? Lastly, the financial guarantee for being here in perpetu, in perpetu, oh, for a lifetime. When I was in, out of college, I had a, I bought a, a lifetime subscription to Life Magazine. It only lasted until maybe three years later and Life went out of business. So I, all I heard was that Westmont does have a provision for a tax, dormant tax. I didn't know if that would cover the fact, okay, if something happened to this development and Core or WCW had to walk away, what liability will they owe us to maintain that property in, for, forever?
Thank you. So a, a couple of things I want to touch on there. I'm not sure I said that the hotel can't afford to maintain the golf course. I'm, I don't think those words came out. What I said is that the, the concept of the golf course from 1981 was that it was a, it was a business center. It was a hotel resort conference center. It was built by Carsons. Carsons did this one. They did Indian, Blooming, they did Bloomingdale and Itasca. The Bloomingdale Hotel has, has effectively been closed. The village closed it as a result of there being some very bad activity that happened there. The village denied a development proposal on the golf course and ended up acquiring the golf course themselves. The, the Itasca development has been on the market for a period of time, on and off the market. This property, the hotel, has thrived for a long time. The, you have a good owner who's invested a lot of money in the, in the redevelopment and the repositioning of the hotel. What he has said is not that he can't afford the golf. What he's said, what he has said is that the golf at 18 holes is not accretive to the long-term success of the hotel. The hotel does not get business from the golf course, as was originally conceptualized. And, and on the flip side, the hotel is not generating stays from businessmen who are then coming out and playing golf. Those two things were, were intended to work synergistically, and they no longer do. Is it because the three 10-story office buildings didn't develop? I don't know. There's, there's no way to get to that. Is that part of it? Probably, but I, I think there's changing dynamics. I, I worked on the, I, I worked on the Bloomingdale project, and the fact of the matter is that dynamics in the industry that existed in 1981 have fundamentally changed. On that, on that property, they, they used to do 100% of the conference and training for United. And so the, the owner of that hotel got up and said, on September 11th, they, United called, or the day after September 11th, United called and canceled all remaining conferences and has never been back. The, the business dynamic that existed in 1981 around a hotel, office buildings, and a golf course does not exist today. I go golfing once a year, and it's because it's a charity outing for a friend whose brother passed away. As, as a business professional today, five hours on the golf course just, just isn't how I'm willing to invest my time. And that's changed, that, that's changed the dynamics of how this hotel can continue to operate. What the owner has said is that he would like to preserve half of the golf course in perpetuity as open space, a right, a right in into the residence and the park district that does not exist today. The property is Zone B3. The owner has a right to develop under the B3 zoning district, and he is foregoing that right with respect to 50% of the property. He is maintaining the right with respect to approximately 50% of the property, and that's why we're here today. The single-family residential development, will we have multi-families? Multiple families in a single unit? Absolutely not. If that is not specifically prohibited in the plan development agreement, we are absolutely happy to write that as a restriction in the plan development district, or in the plan development agreement. And then, I, I think there was a follow, follow-up question regarding the guarantee. I don't know that we've gotten to the specific provisions of how that guarantee will work, but there are financial instruments that we use for every type of development, whether it be Del Webb or this, that are third-party securitized documents that allow us to guarantee. We've got the SSA as a backup guarantee. We've got a lot of tricks of the trade that we can provide to the village in order to make sure that the guarantees are in place and that the village is protected and the residents are protected in the event that everything isn't roses when we move forward.
Again, Adam Kingsley, and I'm representing the Royal Hills Club and Indian Trail Homeowner Associations. I did not have a presentation, though. At some point in time, I, I may ask Russ to put up one of the slides. But what I would like to do, if I can, is, is hand around copies of the comprehensive plan. And I, and I want to highlight a couple of, in fact, I have highlighted in the copies, you've got some elements of the comprehensive plan that are specific to some of the things we've heard tonight regarding this being a rental complex, the BTR or the Built to Rent complex. Do I've got, do I have enough of those circulating? Do I need a couple more on this end?
We're good.
Okay. It's a lot of, the comprehensive plan is a, is a 2013 document. I don't know if any of you participated in, in that, but I'm sure you're familiar with it. And I'm, I'm sure John has kind of told you what the significance of a comprehensive plan is to, to your decision-making. And I'm just going to kind of go through some of the, the elements in the comprehensive plan and kind of hopefully get to the point that I'm, I want to make with respect to this, why this should not be a rental community. And I will take issue with something that was said about whether or not you can consider the rental versus owner-occupied as part of your decisions. So the, the first page of the comprehensive plan, I just highlighted to indicate that this plan sets a course to dive land use decision-making for the next 10 to 15 years. So the plan is still relevant, passed in, in 2013, so we're still in the timeframe that the plan was, was intended. Second page of the comprehensive plan, just kind of talks about the purpose of the plan, which is to guide your decision-making, to guide the decision-making of the, of the ZBA and, I'm sorry, of the PCZ, and ultimately of, of village decision-makers. And again, on page three, it says, how do we add or use the comprehensive plan? The comprehensive plan establishes the ground rules for private improvement and development and provides guidelines which the Planning and Zoning Commission and Village Board can review to evaluate development proposals. So just tell me it's an important document, something you guys and women already know. So let me get to, to why, what's in the comprehensive plan matters. Chapter two of the comprehensive plan was a community outreach survey, and the, the people put the plant, the comprehensive plan together, obviously wanted input from the community, because it was designed to reflect what the community felt about the future of their, of their own neighborhoods and their own, and their vision for Westmont. And if you take a look at page nine, it summarizes some of the questions that were asked of the community. the community. And one of the questions regarded the issue of rental versus owner-occupied housing. And the plan on page nine says, "The overwhelming response to what respondents would not like to see developed in the village was more apartment slash rental housing." 80.5%. But let me, let me say that again, reverse. 80.5% of the people who responded to this community outreach reach survey said they did not want to see more rental development in Westmont, which is consistent from what we've heard from, from several people here tonight. Because one of the reasons being that Westmont already has a large percentage of rental units, I believe we heard 48%, and when you compare that to neighboring communities, that's much larger than neighboring communities. So 10 years ago, there was already concern being expressed by residents about more rental housing in the, in the neighborhood. And that's reiterated on page 15, where it summarizes early concerns, says residents are concerned about the high level of rental housing in the community. So what were the, the recommendations or how did that, how did those residential concerns play out? Well, take a look at page 57, because page 57 is the residential area plan. There were, there were different parts that covered commercial areas, industrial areas, open space, but chapter six, starting on page 57, is the residential area plan. There are three main recommendations on page 57. Number one is preserve and enhance the village's housing stock. Number two, maintain and/or reduce the ratio of rental units to owner-occupied units. Let me, let me say that again. The number two recommendation for residential areas in your comprehensive plan was to maintain or reduce the ratio of rental units to owner-occupied units. Well, you only change that ratio by building more owner-occupied units. If you're building residential, if you're building rental units, you're sending the ratio in the wrong direction. That was the second major recommendation. And that's actually followed on page 58 and again on page 60 with some ideas about how to facilitate that. One of the ideas was converting rental buildings to condominiums. So, so the idea is, hey, maybe we can convert some rental buildings to owner-occupied buildings. And, and so one of the suggestions is to use a condominium conversion ordinance to encourage the transformation of rental properties to owner-occupied condos. This is important, to further stabilize the housing stock and strengthen the long-term residency characteristic of the village population. And we've heard that concern tonight, that there's, that there is a difference between people who own their own homes, who invest in their own homes, who, who repair their homes, who replace their roofs, and renters, no matter what the price being charged, renters do not have the same incentive to maintain whatever rental unit they're in. And, and this indicates that the idea of having more single, more owner-occupied units strengthens the long-term residency characteristics of the village population. More people staying here for 20 and 30 years and less people being here for six months or a year. So that is why the fact that this is designed at, and from day one, that this was designed as a rental community is important. And, and you all can, can make decisions based upon whether it's a rental community or it's an owner-occupied community, especially if they're doing everything as of right, if they wanted to just go ahead and, and build as of right, yeah, you, you would not have that ability. But they're coming to you with all sorts of requests for plan developments and variations and special uses. When you're considering those elements, you can't consider whether or not you want another rental community in, in the village. I've got a letter that I've, I've written in, it's in your packet, it's actually in section 1D. I hope you get a chance to read that if you, if you haven't. I'm just going to, if I, if time permits me, kind of touch on a couple of other things in the, in the letter. Again, the, the major concern being that this is a built-to-rent community. And again, with respect to Core, and, and I know that Joe highly believes in this, in this product and is sincere about it, but it is an experimental and risky product. Their, their, Core has never developed this type of community before, and this type of community has not been developed anywhere in DuPage County. The, the closest geographic area that, that Core could point to the same type of community was in Orland Hills. This is, this is new, this is risky. Now, Core says, well, don't worry about it. We'll, we'll take the risk, it's our money, you know, it's our risk, our experts tell us that we're going to make a lot of money. But the, the fact is, if, if something goes wrong here in a year or five years or 10 years, and a first-class community slips and becomes a second-class community or a third-class community, Core may not even own it anymore. It may have flipped several times, just like the, the other rental housing that we talked about, which is now aspire or, okay, all right, that, that's arrived, it might be, it might be aspire next time. Now it's arrived, but it could be aspire. The, the point being that is, is as much as these gentlemen are, are sincere, they may not be around in 10 years or 20 years when 230 roofs need to be replaced. And there's been no maintenance on these units because the renters have no incentive to, to, to maintain the units. So there's a long-term risk.
That's time.
Okay. If I could have a short extension?
Go ahead.
Okay. Let me, the, the last thing I want to do, and maybe I can engage you a little bit, Joe, is a question on the 239 units. And I, I know that these, you don't consider these lots or typical lots, but I'd like to understand how, if you, whether you call them lots or plots or land area, what is the general land area on which each of these structures or homes is, is sitting? It's, it's 40 feet wide by how deep?
I, I turn to the petitioner for that. I, I believe that I did a brief, and it came out to about 3,600 square feet.
Okay, so 30, so about, so these, these lots would be approximately 3,600 square feet. And that's where I'm just, I, I just don't understand, because one of the things that you said in your report was that, that we should take a look at, I believe it's section 6.04 of the, of the code. And when I take a look at that, I see things like minimum lot width, it should be 60 feet in the R4 community. And minimum square footage or minimum lot size should be 7,800 square feet in the R4 Front and side yard should be 35 feet in the R4 community. And so I, you know, this, I believe, I don't want to use the word substandard, but these lots are certainly smaller than typical R4 lots. Is that a fair statement?
I'm not going to say that's a fair statement because you're trying to equate lots, because the lot is actually 1,000 feet. What it is, is you're trying to equate what is a normal single-family lot is in comparison to this. And I think it's a very fair assessment to say, what is the normal area around the property, which based on there's 25 or 30-foot, you can do, say it's, it's 3,600. But our interpretation of the code was that the lot width was not applicable because the lot width was 1,000 feet because it's on one lot. And that our code did not give us the ability to state that we look at each home as a lot when it's not a lot.
Okay, well, are there other single-family detached subdivisions in the village that have 3,600 square-foot lots?
I, I don't have an answer for that.
Okay. I, I think, and I believe you said, and this is not a standard subdivision. I mean, I think you, you said that. And, and the point is that this is, is dense. It is, it is not Oakwood, it's not close to Oakwood. Is it similar to, if you want to compare it to Royal Hills Club, you want to compare it to Indian Trail, I understand that, but those are both attached housing. And one of the things that we sorted out last year between the Plan Commission and the Village Board is that we wanted detached housing. And I believe, I don't know whether it was here with the Village Board, but there were, one of the, either one of the commissioners or one of the trustees commented, yeah, detached housing, single-family detached housing, something like Oakwood. And, and so that was sort of put out, I thought, into the, into the bloodstream. And, and this is not like Oakwood in, in any sense, either because of the, the rental aspect of it or the, you know, the density aspect of it. And I think part of the reason is that, that Core from day one decided that they wanted to do this new-fangled and quite frankly risky built-to-rent community. They, they never really thought about doing the traditional single-family community or a, you know, a preserved community. And part of that may have to do with how much they're paying the hotel and what the hotel wants to make for selling this property and kind of cashing out its investment to a certain degree. But, you know, again, as, as we mentioned in, in my letter, we think, and many people here have said tonight, that we should think about a traditional, single-family, standard R4 subdivision like Oakwood. And I think a lot of the residents in, in Royal Hills Club and Indian Trail would be supportive of something like that. Thank you for giving me some extra time.
I won't be as long as he is. My name's Joan Gagin. I'm a resident of Indian Trail, an original resident, and I'm past president and have been on the board from 2006 to 2021. So I've seen things change a lot over this time. You've heard people come, very concerned about the traffic. It's real. It isn't just the traffic, it's the fact that when we make a left today, we have this space, painted space, so we can wait to finish our left. But under the development, that will be used as a left turn lane into the development. That's their entrance. So it isn't a matter of number of cars. It's the matter, you, at times you cannot make a left and the traffic from Cass and Ogden back up, it can be difficult on the right, but it's happening now. It won't be a matter of cars, it will be traffic accidents. That's going to be the issue as far as the light. I understand that there's some phasing going in. It doesn't have to be done first day. I do appreciate that staff remembered our issue and brought it up. Thank you. But I do think that somehow DuPage County, if we have to provide information, it would have to be addressed sooner than 10 years. The other issue is rentals. I know it is built-to-rent, it is new, banks have all this money, the stocks are crummy, the bonds don't pay interest, so they're investing in real estate. You have these firms going out, they're going through neighborhoods, they are buying homes in your neighborhood. We actually, and it has been mentioned before, passed a rule change that new owners cannot rent their homes. We have experienced that renters are not the same as owners. The FHA recognizes that. They check how many is percentage, you know, like a townhome development, how many are owner-occupied versus rental? Because even they know it's an investment property, it's not homes. It does make a difference. We're next door to arrive, I guess now. It's been the spinning name change. We've had garbage, we've had vandalism, then it gets changed, another REIT buys it, and they might modernize it, they may have on-site management, and it improves. But sometimes it goes the other way. I remember we had police living there once. I mean, you know, it happens and it's a huge development and it certainly impacted us. So we have so much rental in the village that we have approximately 25,000 residents. How much votes are cast in local elections? Couple thousand, that's it, couple thousand. You can't have a prosperous village with people not connected to the village. And I know that, oh, we want, that's a short-term lease for six months. And, okay, make it an annual lease, but can people sublease? They do in other places. You got a lease. Now you've got three people in a three-story building, who, where are those cars going to park? This is what's going on. It is very risky. If you go way, way back to the old days of Maze Lake and Peabody Mansion, that was going to be developed into condos. And it was started, and then the financing, they went belly up. And it was women who actually started, we need to save this. And they rallied and got DuPage Forest Preserve District and got the voters to approve to buy Maze Lake Peabody Mansion, which is a wonderful asset for the county. We all, hey, it's great.
It's time.
And so I think you need to really consider long-term benefits. This is way too risky for us. It's not for the good of the village. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's 10 o'clock.
My name is Dwayne Newton. I've been affiliated with Westmont all my life. My dad was born here in Westmont, 93 years old. My mother was raised here in Westmont, she's since passed a year ago. Well, again, like you say, we are at the 10 o'clock hour. I, I show interest in Westmont. I got that flyer and I thought that there was conflicting statements back to the 10 o'clock hour. How many more people are, I mean, we were supposed to assess at the 10 o'clock hour if we were going to go another night, another three nights, because, you know, if there's more, so I put that proposal in front of you, if we're going to go longer, because it's past my bedtime. But, and then aren't we to also listen to your comments? So if that is going to go another night, we're guaranteed that. Am I able to ask you folks that question or?
Is Jamie still here? Can she check how many people are?
Even if there's no other people, even if there's no other people behind me, we still have to listen to you all, right? And I'm sure this body here would like to, to listen to what?
I'll, I'll say this, if there's no more speakers that have redundant things to say, I think we can move pretty quickly.
Because I think we're getting into a redundant period, you know?
Jamie, do you know how many more people are in line to a speaker? So I see.
There was one person that was making a.
So it doesn't sound like too many more. Let's press on, how many people?
Continue on then. You know, there were some great points took up, and I'm, I'm kind of working on a, a development myself. I'm, I'm a Michigan guy and I'm on both sides with this development. You know, I'm, I'm trying to deal with the zoning board and, and then myself, because I'm the developer and I'm getting flack, you know, well, I'll call it that. You know, well, I'll call it that. But back to, let's say, Michigan, we call it the master plan. Here you call it the comprehensive plan. Is this thing looked at five years? Is that an Illinois thing? I mean, the master plan is a 20-year outlook, but you're supposed to revisit it every five. So if that information was correct about, you know, this density and the survey of the residents, that they didn't want this rental stuff, I'm still, I guess, I've heard two comments. It's BTR, built-to-rent. Is that what that, there was another word for the R that I thought I heard tonight. So, you know, we all got to get on the same page about definitions and acronyms and that kind of stuff. And there's a lot of zoning, because of my issues I have in my little development thing that I want to do, there's a lot involved in zoning and, you know, definitions and this. You know, it's like the single-family detached unit. You know, I would think to majority of the folks, that is an owner-occupied dwelling. You know, it shouldn't be really rented, you know? With the age of Verbo and Airbnb and all this rental stuff, you know, it's changed housing. Is this affordable housing? Would this be considered affordable housing? I mean, we hear in the media, you know, that we need more affordable housing. I think these guys have shifted their head, no, right? This is not affordable housing. Does Westmont need affordable housing? Yeah, I mean, so I think y'all know where I'm coming from. I guess the main concern I have is some of the projects that have been approved and failed, but some projects have worked as well in Westmont. So, you know, I'm a little skeptical on this particular project, but stormwater is a major concern with myself, with some of the projects that Westmont has done has affected where our family still owns the property here in Westmont. So that's a major concern. And, you know, we briefly touched on that stormwater issue.
That's time.
Okay. Where, I didn't think I was going to last that long. But anyhow, one point, I mean, there was supposed to be some discussion on stormwater or Westmont's position in their engineering. Somewhere in-house here, there's the engineer?
We do have an engineer that's here for questions.
Okay. So I guess we're going to be going on another night.
I just wanted to ask one real quick question. I didn't know I was going to get answers to my questions. Could I just ask the gentleman?
Please come to the podium.
You didn't tell me I was going to get answers. Could you just tell me the address of the location where you're saying this is up and running here in the Illinois area for Oxenfree?
Oh, Oxenfree, no, there is a, stand up. I don't have the address for you, but I can get it for you. It's in Orland Park. I think it was Orland Hills someone mentioned, and I'll get you the name of the development.
All right, and that's the only one, and that's part of Oxenfree, or no?
It is not.
This is going to be part of Oxenfree, though, correct? Because when you go on the website, it says Oxenfree.
Correct.
So do you have an up-and-running Oxenfree system like this anywhere?
No.
That's what I thought.
Good evening all. I'm Jean Donald. I do have a couple of questions about this. Now, my understanding is we're talking 239 units at about $4,000 rent a month, so one building should be bringing in about $48,000 a year. Is that about right? Have I got that right?
Can you repeat that question? I'm sorry.
So my understanding is one unit at $4,000 a month in rental would be bringing in about $48,000 a year. Is that about right?
That's correct.
So that definitely is not particularly affordable, but it's still rental property that only needs to be rented for six months at a time. Where's the stability? Where's the investment by those people in our community? They're not staying necessarily. I would prefer to see, I would hope to see, people that are buying these properties. Is there a path to allow people to buy the properties and stabilize the area? We need more properties where people are living in there owning those properties, not spending $48,000 a year to rent. They're not going to stay. No one's going to put that kind of money into a rental property for more than a year at most. So you've got a whole lot of, let's say, 238 units that could change over every six months, every year. Is that really what we are planning for our community? We're also talking about the impact on the school systems and the cost that the developers are going to put toward that. But each and every year, those costs will reoccur. Are we receiving money from them every single year to cover those costs? Those are questions I think we really need to look at. Where's the stability for our community? How is it helping us to grow? Thank you all for your time.
One second, ma'am.
Yes, so I think she had the rent numbers correct. So you're talking about $48,000 a month, $48,000 a year for rental of a home. We have not ever intimated that this development was affordable. Generally speaking, the resident here is going to have an income of upwards of $150,000 plus. We looked at the comp plan, which has demographic information in it, and we've seen that that is a growing demographic in Westmont. So specifically from this plan that people have wanted to cite, we found the demographic and the income information, and we targeted this development to that growing segment. I think the thing I wanted to respond to was, and this has been kind of a consistent course, right? We need properties where people are going to live and people are going to say. And everyone wants to talk about Oakwood, and there's no doubt. Oakwood is a well-regarded community. But I can't help but go back to the slide, right?
Hold on one second, Russ. Dennis, can you put the laptop back up on the screens, please? Thank you.
So we can see that you have a great, a great for-sale community in Oakwood right next to us. Even though it's generally a for-sale community, people are renting homes in these communities. No one here has suggested that Oakwood is a bad community because people have rented those homes. The people in Oakwood who own those homes and have rented them are not bad people for having rented them, right? The renters being in Oakwood have not devalued Oakwood. So I think there's this misnomer that as soon as we bring renters in, that they're going to devalue the property. I think we can see here that Oakwood is being rented. It's not devalued the property. I think the, one of the implications is by virtue of providing a community where you have single-family homes that are specifically rented, some of these rentals in Oakwood probably go away. So now you have, those rentals that are already occurring are really just shifting, and you have them occurring in a neighborhood like this, and you have a community like Oakwood being more of a single-family ownership community. The other thing I wanted to hit on real quickly is, you know, I kind of going through the comp plan, and we can respond to a lot of the things that Adam said, but if we're looking at page 59 and talking about single-family residential development in Westmont, I've heard rental numbers presently, in the comp plan, presently, single-family detached housing accounts for almost 70% of Westmont's dwelling units. 70% of all Westmont dwelling units, per the comp plan, are single-family units. So I'm not entirely sure where the 48% rental number's coming from. Maybe there's a, maybe there's an extraordinary number of single-family homes that are already being rented, but Westmont has an extraordinary stable base of single-family homes. 70% of the housing stock is single-family homes.
Thank you.
But what you're telling me is that these homes don't have.
To the microphone, please.
I'm so sorry. What I'm hearing is that these places don't need to be rented more than six months at a time. The stability is not there. I'm also told in some of the subdivisions you're mentioning, there's now public housing with the rental there. I don't know how that would happen with this, but if you're not getting the $4,000 you planned on in rent or $3,000 in rent, all of a sudden, this whole project could become hot or whatever. We don't know how it would be five or 10 years down the road. But the stability for the community is not there. I would expect to see more high-end owner, resident-owned homes in those lots. It's perfect for it. Maybe we can facilitate that. Thank you so much.
Ma'am, you've been waiting.
My name's Laurel Rugan. I've lived in different parts of Westmont for 38 years. I just, well, besides the obvious about the almighty dollar, why it's felt to shoehorn so many of these homes so close together? I mean, you can like hang out your dining room window and go, hey, can you pass me the salt to your next-door neighbors? That's ridiculous. It's just like spread-out apartments that I've seen in other towns, and it's, I just don't understand why we have to destroy like one of the last green spaces that Westmont has. I mean, I moved here years ago and raised my family because it was a nice community, but stuff like this, it's just out of control. And I just agree with all the other villagers that have spoken with their opinions, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Reema Broodus. I live in Oakwood. And I thought that I was inspired to say something. Forgive me if there's some redundancy. However, this is an opportunity for everyone who's got an opinion to share it. I, actually, I'm not that familiar with that. I think it is. Is that what it is? I don't, I'm not saying it to be funny. I'm really, this is my first time here. Thanks for having us all. I know there's a lot of us, and it's late, and you guys are, everybody is here late. I'm representing Oakwood as a regular person who loves it because of the space, the neighbors, and all that great stuff. And thank you all for talking about Oakwood like it's this magical place. I agree with you. Oakwood rocks. You're all welcome to be there. We live next to the beach. Please, and I'm not even kidding you, you're all very welcome to Oakwood. And it's the space. You all know it, too. It's the space. That's why Oakwood is magical. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to, from the public, like to address the petitioner or the issue?
Well, I have to tell you, I did not plan this. They had to get up anyhow, so. I live in the Midwest.
Your name, sir?
I'm sorry. My name is Bill Lemey. I'm a resident of Indian Trail for almost 40 years. I'm 39. But in the Midwest, we have the stuff that falls from the sky.
To the microphone, sir.
There's white stuff that falls from the sky?
Snow.
Snow, right. Where are you going to put the snow? Where are you going to put the snow? In Indian Trail, I've been there a long time, I've been through a lot of snows, right, Mary? And we don't have a lot of space.
Sir, can you address the commissioners?
I'm sorry. But you don't have a lot of space for snow. We have a little space between driveways and the street and everything. There's nowhere to go this way. The only place you can go is this way. So in some of our big snows, we've had snow seven, eight feet tall. And it stayed, depending on temperature and everything, stayed for a long time. You don't have as much space in your layout that I saw with your buildings and everything. What would be your snow plan?
So this actually isn't a super uncommon question. We get this on a fairly regular basis, not just for this, but if you do any townhome development, right? Everyone always says, where does the snow go? So interestingly enough, I don't think there's a community in Illinois that actually has a snow storage standard. You have to go to Colorado to find a snow storage standard, and they're actually surprisingly not that significant. So I haven't run a specific number to show where snow storage would occur here, but to Mr. Zemanek's point earlier, the concept behind the development is that, yes, we've got homes sort of clustered, and then we've got these eco nodes, social nodes, parks, and other open spaces built throughout the community. So we're encouraging people not to use their, to come out of their house and be more social, to enjoy the community, to meet their neighbors. And that's why we're focused on these significantly improved social spaces that are spread throughout the community. Those social spaces provide, I mean, there's, there are 3,000 square feet here, 10,000 square feet there. The Oak Grove section to the north is like four acres. There's another pocket park there that's a half acre. There's room all throughout the development. Like I said, we've got 65 acres of stormwater detention. We've got plenty of space throughout the development to accommodate storage, snow storage. I have absolutely zero concern that we could run an engineering plan using snowfall and boulder that is like 10 times the amounts that we get here in Illinois and have absolutely no issue with snow storage.
Well, you have thousands and thousands of square feet of just roads alone, as well as driveways. I mean, we've had our roads plowed, our driveways plowed, and eventually we get out. I remember the snow of '79, if anybody remembers that.
Sir, can you address the commissioners?
I'm sorry?
Please address us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Want to hear you.
The snow of '79. I live in the southern, western suburbs, by the way, and we had like, what, 26 inches of snow. And I worked in Maywood, and I was 10 minutes from home. Took me two hours to get home because there was no place to put the snow. That's my only question. Where do you put the snow?
Okay, next.
My name is Stacy Stackhouse, and I live in Liberty Park, which is pretty much across from there. And my, I have several questions. First of all, do we know who put out this? If anybody knows, you can tell me later, but I just got this today, so I'm not prepared to stand up here and talk. But as I listen, I want to know why we need 239 units. It just smacks of corporate breed to me. Do we need this many, much more tax revenue in our community? In Liberty Park, we've had flooding issues for years, and recently, we've got proposals, as you well know, about doing something about bringing the water into there. It's going to cost, if I was to do it, would cost me over years, not taking out my well and everything, over $20,000. If we get 239 more units in here, is it going to lower all of our taxes across Westmont? What is this going to do for our community? That's what I'm not getting here. I do agree about the green spaces. We have no more green spaces. I came to Westmont because it was a small community. I moved into a small area. I was a single person. I have upgraded my home. I have upgraded my neighborhood, but there is a lot of rental units and the single-family homes in my neighborhood. And if anybody knows Liberty Park and you drive through there, it's despicable. I'm afraid to bring my family members in, okay, because we have so many people renting there, and they do not care. I've had to put up fences in between my neighbors whose house is probably 12 to 15 feet away. Cars junk everywhere because they're renters. They do not care. I've been a landlord, like the first lady that talked, and I've rented to some really nice quality people. They trash my house. They all trash my houses. I deliver for Federal Express in Oakbrook and in Hinsdale. And they're high-rent areas. You know, you know the homes, million-dollar homes. I deliver to them. They're a mess. They're a mess. And a lot of them are renting them. They are a mess. They're doctors, they're lawyers, they're a mess. They do not take care of their properties. And I know they say they're gonna fix their properties, but there's only so much that you can fix. The next thing that wasn't addressed is cars. Yes, them hanging across, but what type of cars? Can you make sure that somebody has a nice car? You can't do that. There's gonna be nasty-looking cars, and they're because people are going to be renters, and they are gonna cut back. In order to make a $4,000 or $3,000 rent, they're gonna drive crappy cars, and they're not, you guys know this, you know it's gonna be true. You didn't address the noise. I live across from the hotel. Wedding sounds, anybody who lives in Oakwood knows, all, all evening long, all summer long, all you do is hear wedding bands. And they're not the best music. They're not rock and roll. They are no good. And nobody addresses that on that. I don't want to talk about traffic as far as the traffic being busy there, but I go from my house to Route 88. That's where I go every day. It takes a long time to go down that road without having more stoplights. And you're gonna add more traffic in there? We don't have a ton of access, we have access down Ogden, but you already know how many lights it takes to go from Ogden Avenue down to 294. It takes forever because you're going 20 feet, 30 feet, it's longer than that, but it's light after light after light. So to have more traffic come along here, I picked Liberty Park because it was across from a golf course, because I wanted some open land, some pretty trees, something. Liberty, Tywaner Park was another reason I moved here, okay? I can barely, I actually stopped walking to Liberty Park, and you know it's right across Cass Avenue from me. It's too dangerous to walk across there. I used to ride my bike across there. It's too dangerous to go across there now, and there's no lights there. 239 units times all these thousands of people you're talking about is gonna be ridiculous to have that traffic go through there. We haven't, and nobody's talked about going to the store. We got lots of stores around there. You're gonna go to Jewel and wait in lines for that? It's going to do so much to increase what we're already trying to just live peacefully and not have so many people here. Westmont was kind of that area. And when you start talking about doing this, I don't know what the angle is other than, I mean, this is a question, first of all, this is the other thing, is what is this home rule? Does this, is there any validity to this, that the number of people in here are gonna change our tax rate?
No. The village has really nothing to do with that.
Okay, so this...
About whether we become home rule or not. That's based on population counts, and it's measured every 10 years. And last time it was measured, which was 2020, the village did not meet that population threshold to become home rule. If the village were to become, and that's not relevant to the zoning discussions before this commission, but home rule doesn't mean more taxes. And there's plenty of studies that say home rule communities don't tax more than non-home rule communities. That's, that's not an issue that this commission or the village board can take into account when considering this development.
Well, I'm sure somebody's gonna get a lot of taxes from homes that are renting for $48,000 a year. And I certainly don't think it's gonna impact any of us. So I guess that's all I have to say, other than, this is the first time I got this, so if I just got this, I'm sure, and look at all the people, you filled two rooms today. If people had more time on this, I bet you, you would have a whole lot more people here that had something to say. Please keep us a nice, safe neighborhood. Stop the growth, just deal with the quality. Go down Ogden Avenue and spruce up those businesses, not have weeds all over and all this stuff.
That's time.
Okay? That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask? What a value, or what is, well, I'm gonna talk about taxes. Well, this setup, the owner is gonna pay the big tax note? Is that how this will work? Like, you know, an individual, single-family dwelling, we pay our property tax. But this corporation's gonna pay the whole project's property tax?
Correct.
So, I'm a numbers kind of guy, I like to play around with numbers, so do you have a projected number of what this tax is gonna bring into Westmont, this project? Property tax?
I cannot speak to that because planning and zoning doesn't have any authority over property tax.
Okay.
Nor can we consider taxes as a basis for approving or not approving a development. So it's not relevant.
It's a good question.
It's not, it's not relevant, at least from our end.
Well, I mean, okay, I'll take that for, well, then can I ask the developer what maybe the, or how, again, I guess I can't ask you folks what, I mean, can I try to backfigure what a unit should pay? Let's say, is these units gonna have like a 200, 2K, 200K value, and then base tax on it?
Sir, with all due respect, it's really not relevant to what we're here for tonight.
Okay, okay. That's all I got for right now. I got a lot more, but.
I'll let you guys talk.
Thank you.
I am so sorry.
Anyone else? Well, let's go to the commissioners. Mr. Scales, would you like to start?
Sure, I'll start. First off, thank you for your efforts, for your time tonight. Staff, thank you for all of your work on this. I know this is a lot of work in front of us, and we appreciate the detail. And thanks to everyone here tonight for coming out and your comments. I'll be brief. Hopefully, we can get to a vote on this tonight. I just have a few quick questions, mostly for you guys, so whoever wants to stand up and take these in particular order can. Regarding the rollout of your phases, do you have any idea of what your internal market study would tell you? Or is it gonna be based on demand? How quickly do you intend to roll out the different phases?
Very quickly. I mean, we're right now in the market. The, the limitation on the ability to put markets on the ground is the labor supply. So, we would be, we would be looking to build through the units as we've set forth in the phasing plan effectively as quickly as we can. So if it was single-family development, Hulte, by way of example, they would build after they sold. We would be, we would begin building, we would follow the phasing plan in terms of path, but we would be building straight through, completed within 18 months, two years.
Okay. How long has the BTR concept been around, as far as you know, to the best of your knowledge?
Decades.
Decades?
Yeah.
And are there any communities, then, that you've seen case studies that have failed or been successful? Have any failed and had to be sold off as individual, single-family home lots? Is, is there anything like that that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. I know Orland Park was, Orland Park has been cited a couple of times. That was an S.R. Jacobson deal. That's generally regarded as a BTR community. I represented S.R. Jacobson in Naperville on a, on similar concept, but I don't think we were really talking about it as BTR six or seven years ago when it was built. That was all townhomes. It was wildly overperformed. It was occupied and sold, and sold off as an investment-grade asset. That was probably, I'm guessing, it was seven years ago, that was probably 80 to 100 units, and that was immediately adjacent to a high-end residential community in South Naperville.
And correct me if I'm wrong, you represent the owner of the property currently, is that right?
I represent Core Spaces.
So you represent Core. I'm curious, did, did the owner reach out to you guys, or did you reach out to the owner to bring this opportunity?
We reached out to the owner.
So you were searching for land, saw this as an opportunity, and...
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, I just have a quick question regarding the mechanics of the SSA. So this might be an attorney question, but in the unlikely event, as you noted, if it was to, if there were to be issues and that SSA has to kick in, how does the, and I'll do my best articulating this, but how does that, how do the mechanics, the forcefulness of getting that to work? Maybe you can answer that.
Yeah, the SSA format is not, is not unique, right? We do this, there, there are communities across northern Illinois that require this for every single development, right? In many instances, it's used to guarantee improvements to a stormwater basin, right? So, when a stormwater basin sediments in, or when an outfall fails, and homeowners association is liable to replace that, oftentimes, they don't. The village then has the maintenance to assess a tax on just that specific community, right? Only those residents who failed to maintain are then responsible for it. In this situation, we're saying, hey, listen, we'll, we'll guarantee all of our performance with an SSA. If we fail to maintain, per the PD agreement, the village has to provide us notice. We've got to respond within a defined period of time. If we don't respond, the village can begin issuing violation notices. It's a separate violation for every day, the, the separate violation for every day outstanding. So I think that's like 500 bucks a day begins to toll quickly, right? On top of that, the village can say, hey, you failed to maintain these things, we're gonna run an engineering cost estimate of what needs to be done. This is the amount that you are going to need to pay for us to come in and actively do the work on your behalf. And they then, they then, as part of the levy process through village taxation, are able to impose that special tax on the property. Now, I think the, the only question becomes, are they recovering it in a year, or are they recovering it over a five-year period? But it's a tried and true means of ensuring that a property owner or a group of property owners are ultimately responsible for their improvements.
And, and that, I think you said it earlier, that runs with the land, so if you guys were to sell in seven years to a new owner, that, that would apply to the new owner as well, correct?
It, it's not even a covenant, right? It's a taxing district. That, once it's formed, the village controls it in perpetuity. The only way it could be released is by village action.
Okay, got it. And the same is true with the plan development agreement. That's recorded against title to the property regardless of ownership. The, the current owner has to comply with all of the maintenance standards, replacement, repair standards, and, and other requirements of that agreement. Okay. That was my next question. And just while we're on the PDA, I do have a general question on that. While I realize we're not voting on that, are the details of that germane to what we would ultimately be responsible for?
I believe so, because it addresses things such as phasing. It requires them to pay the impact fees to the parks and the schools. It requires that they build out certain amenities and continually maintain those amenities. It provides that the interior finishes of the homes are going to be of a certain quality. It attaches all of the plans, whether it's the landscape plans, the elevations, et cetera, that they have to abide by when they actually build this out, so they can't suddenly change their mind and build something different than what they've promised and what's been approved.
So regardless of the outcome of our vote tonight, if that were to, that would still be something that would be worked out according to details, is that correct?
So it is pretty much worked out, subject to any input you have, or input that the public has that would improve that document, and any input that the village board has.
Got it.
There's still some minor points to address, but we've, we wanted to make sure we had that document in a good place coming to this public hearing.
Okay. Just two more questions, they're quick, and it's regarding how we're gonna vote tonight. So, the setback for legally divided parcels, that's because there's only five par, one parcel that's associated with the lot, that they're going to have the, the homes on them. It's just pertaining to that, not the individual lots, correct? Or the individual home sites, because they're not technically lots?
There, there's two issues, and Joe, can, do you want to take it, or you want me to go? So, so it's not about the individual home lots. It's about, there is one property line that runs between this Lot 2 and what is the hotel, and then there's a new Lot 3 and a Lot 4. And then Lot 1.
Got it.
And when you read the code in its technical terms, it says there should be a 50-foot setback for internally, internal parcel lines. So this is an internal parcel line, but then when you apply the plan development, it allows you to request a reduced internal setback. And so that's what they're doing, and that's why they're allowed to, permitted to ask for it as a waiver, not a variance.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that. And then, lastly, when it comes to PZC 060 2022, C 1 and 2, are we gonna vote on those as 1 and 2, or the whole thing?
Whole thing.
Because I wanna, I would prefer to vote one way on 1 and one way on 2. So if there's a way for us to modify how we would do that, I'll throw that out to the group for discussion, but I have a specific way. I see those as two very different requests.
Yeah, you can, but when we get to that item after the chairman reads it, you can ask that there be a separate vote on those items.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Commissioner LaVoy.
LaVoy, here we go. Well, I really think that these two cases tonight before us are really paramount importance to the village, and to the residents, and to our children. Our decision here tonight is about them, and about, you know, all of us that live here now, but this is really, really a permanent decision that will impact people in the future. I wanted to extend gratitude to the village staff, who put an enormous amount of time into this project so far and continue to do so. All of the consultants that are here, all of the design team that is here, the applicant with all of his, his members. And it, it's a very complex project that, we have a mountain of records that we've gone through, and it's sometimes very difficult to see, sift through all of that information, even with the testimony tonight. And I have some comments related to Mr. Whitaker's, his comments so far. But it's something that, these packages are, since they are very comprehensive, it's something that takes a lot of time to review and absorb all of the comments that you all have, and also the testimony from the, from the applicant. And I'll, I'll start with that. And that is that I respectfully disagree with some of the comments that Mr. Whitaker has, has made. And with that, you know, I just don't think personally, in my opinion, that you could take a case law approach to the comp plan as you did, where you, you basically say that since, and during your testimony, you talked about other revisions that were made to the comp plan, that the village has done X, Y, and Z on other projects at other locations. And I think that's really unfair, because the village, in its entirety, including this commission, looks at every case individually, and every case is unique, and every case may have a different result based on all of the information that is part of, of that particular case. So just because there's been modifications and deviations from the comp plan, that doesn't justify this project from deviating. So I disagree with that assessment and that approach. And I kind of think that, and thank you for the copy of the comp plan, that's kind of something, I've actually read it 50 times since this project's been here. And I think that the other point that I think that, that the applicant has missed, in my opinion, is what the spirit of the document says, especially when it relates to open You use the zoning analysis, well, it's not open space because it's, it's zoned, a different zone. And I don't think that the residents, and I don't think that, that the folks that were involved in the comp plan when it was drafted really looked at it that way. And that's what I mean by the spirit of the document. I think the spirit of the document is that even though that the property next to the Tywaner Building is zoned industrial, it was really characterized back then as open space. And it didn't, didn't, they didn't have the parallel with, well, it's not open space because of ownership or because of what it's being used for. It was considered open space because it was open. It's that simple. And so, I don't want to analyze it too far here, but it, it's something that, you know, I, I don't want to deviate from the spirit of that document too far. You know, it's, the comp plan is really laced with comments related to open space, and really definitive about rental units in the village. The consultants who authored the comp plan made recommendations to reduce the number of rental units in the village because we're out of balance. I, I stated at the last public hearing that I felt that, just being a commissioner and looking at this comp plan, that the best way to do this, since the, the comp plan was, even though it's valid, it's still valid, it's still, still here, it's still being discussed before us, that if it needs an update, we should follow the same procedure that we did the last time. And that means that we should have the consultant do his thing, and all of the residents should have an input on their thing. We should have those workshops again and determine what is the best use, especially for the property in discussion tonight. And I don't think that they would come to the conclusion that, about this project, nor do I... about this project, nor do I think that personally, that we should, even though it's in front of me and in front of this commission to make a decision, that, that on a wand, that we make a change to the comp plan of this magnitude. I just think that I have a lot of respect for the elders. I have a lot of respect for the people who, who put their mind and their thought into that comp plan, and I value the document. And it says what it says. And I, my comments now are no different than they were at the first public hearing. But I'll go through some other comments here as we went through this discussion tonight. That this type of development, again, as we've heard, is really unproven, to the best of my knowledge. The long-term condition of the project is at, is at risk when the ownership changes, the markets change, the rentals are plentiful, and a glut of units are available for rent. There is an exposure to the village if that were to happen, and I hope you understand that, that if you choose to move on after this development, we're left with it. And there's a reason, I don't know, I'd like to ask you one question for sure, is why couldn't this development be designed to fit the framework of a zoning code with regular building setbacks and with regular lot sizes and still be rental? We will not be able to convert this property if the, if the project fails. And that's the risk. That's where we are. And that's my concern, that it's an exposure to the village. And I know that there's been steps made with staff to actually go through and put pieces of the puzzle together. So we have some assurances, and we have some fallback positions. But if ownership changes on a 1031 exchange, and all of a sudden, you're out because the rentals are down and the margins aren't there, what happens to the Village of Westmont? That's my concern. And that's my concern about it being, not being owner occupied, along with all the other concerns related to the, the maintenance and the upkeep. And I've seen other developments where, in suburban Chicago, that have private streets. The cost of the improving those streets is pretty high. And then it doesn't get done. And then what happens? And there's no enforcement. We can't enforce it. Well, we have, have the mechanism in place, but it's really something that we end up being in conflict with you because of your position and our position to maintain it. So I think it opens up some potential for conflicts in the future. And I'm concerned about it from that perspective. And I am concerned about it from, from the perspective of the surrounding neighborhoods, including Oakwood, including the properties across the street that residents are here tonight. I'll make some comments on the design that wasn't mentioned tonight. For example, there's a, there's a natural buffer. You may call it scrub, you may call it whatever it is, but along the whole south line is a pretty significant green buffer between the other properties that, including the Tye project, including the, the senior housing project on the corner. There's a significant buffer that is going to be gone because you're back in, the dwelling unit's right up against that. And you have utilities running through there, so it's all going to be gone. I have a concern about that. We have a very, we're used to seeing, with our arborist on staff, we have pretty stringent requirements for subdivisions that, you know, for street trees. We don't have any. The trees are offset to the houses, and you don't see the trees. Well, up the landscape plan. I didn't see them on the information that I got, okay? I'll make comments on the traffic. I think the real problem with the traffic is that it's, it's a, an issue where I understand technically that warrants aren't met. I don't believe that in 10 years, the warrants will be met. Because we're a fully developed neighborhood or area. I mean, it's not something that there's going to be a significant amount of development that would increase traffic to the point where warrants would be met. So in my opinion, the 10-year plan of putting, running it to do a signal is really worth nothing to me because it's never going to happen. The problem is that the eastbound to northbound traffic motion will be interrupted by the proposed turn lanes. The level of service will go down significantly, and that's according to your own traffic report. So now, instead of having the lane, the striped lane, you're going to have a turn lane, and people will not be able to turn north during peak hour, you know, without a, without a significant delay. But I come back to the comp plan, and I express the value that I have personally, because I've read it 50 times. I know what it says, and I know what the intent was. And just because an underlying zoning of property changed, it doesn't matter to me. It was the concept and the perception of that being open space. And we value the open space. I think that this is in stark contrast from the, from the rental properties to those two, two components of open space and rental properties. And, and that's something that was in the comp plan very thoroughly. But I really think that, you know, with those comments and concerns, I can't support any, either case across the board. I will not be voting in favor of, of either case tonight, for sure. And I haven't been swayed by testimony, and I spent a significant amount of time reviewing the package and what it meant, and what it means for the future of Westmont, and what it means for the existing residents, the neighborhood, everything. And I just can't get away from being negative on the project. So I'm just, I hope you can respect that. I sat here and listened to it for three hours, and I, I just can't get by some of these issues. And I think there's a significant concern about the future, especially with economic concerns changing, that the viability of this being sustainable. So for that, I'm not going to be in favor. Mr. Chair, I have no more questions, no more comments.
Commissioner Peterson.
I'm not going to prolong the meeting. I've gotten a lot of my questions answered, and the staff does such a great job at giving us information, and from everyone else. So that's all I have, other than the fact that I was born and raised here, and I do take a lot of pride in this, in this town.
Right. Commissioner Thomas, your turn.
I'd like the, the project as far as the developer going in and putting it together and that. But I cannot get around there being, and I'm not an expert on marketing and that. I can't picture, on a layman's term, enough people being able to pay 4,000 a month. And if they can do that, it seems to me that they'd be going somewhere else. And I'm not a marketer or anything, but, and I like, the buildings look great. They, I like the way they're, they're done. There is, and I believe there is room for snow. But if no one's living there, who's going to care? You know, I, that's where I'm at. And I can't guarantee how I vote, but I would have to be persuaded, and so far, I have not been. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren.
I want to read a quote from our, page 50 of our comp plan. "Westmont is nearly built out, and existing development is well-established. As a result, an understanding of the existing built form and land use is important, as the land use plan must build upon the existing land use pattern in the village." Single-family detached residential, page 52. "Single-family detached residential is and should be, continue to be the prominent land use designation." What is a single family in, in Westmont detached? "Minimum standard for a single-family detached residence is 7,800 square feet of lot size, a minimum width of 60 feet, and a 35-foot setback. Who, we who thought we were nearly built out are now presented with a desirable parcel, which should be capable of satisfying the desire of the seller, the developer, and the village. But with this proposal, the village is on the short end. This is the last parcel open of open land that we will see in Westmont. And it warrants the development that is in keeping with the value and the location. In the future, there won't be any more like this. There will all be onesie-twosie, tear-down, redevelopment. The proposal submitted does not meet or measure up in any way to what I feel should be considered for this parcel. I will not suggest any tweaking of the project as I fully reject the concept." And incidentally, for those who feel this is promoted to attain the population required for home real consideration, that's probably already met with the new development of this new apartment building on One West, One West Quinsity. That's all I have.
Thank you. My turn. And for everyone's consideration, Commissioner Berry had to go home, but we still have a quorum. So at one point that has never come up in this that I've wondered about all along is, in this day and age, so many people are getting electronic vehicles. I've seen no, nothing in the units for EV chargers. Why is that? And what, I would think that people paying this kind of rent will have a lot of EVs. How are they going to charge their cars?
Absolutely. So I'm Rob Bach, Lecor, developer. So we're, we're looking into exactly what systems we put in all of the homes. So electric panels that we'll have in there will have capacity to be able to install electric chargers into, into the units.
So you could do it.
Yeah, so we're, we're still researching and finding the best, you know, solution to it. But yeah, we will be EV capable in all of our units.
All right. Thank you.
And a lot of the EV cars have their own unique chargers. So they really can't put the chargers in, but they can run the 240 volt lines.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I only want to add, because staff did request if, information if there would be EV chargers, and the response through the comments were that they would not be there. So this new information is coming out just tonight. So.
Russ, you, your gentleman indicated that the owner reached out to the developer on this, not, the developer contacted the owner with, with this idea to bring, bring this to Westmont, correct?
That's not correct. Can you repeat what you said?
Yeah, well, who contacted whom?
I'm not sure why that's relevant. Can I ask?
Well, the reason I ask, I wonder if, if the owner of this project reached out, Attorney Whitaker mentioned earlier, Del Webb Development as an example.
Do you think?
I'm just wondering if, if any other owner-occupied developers have been contacted regarding...
Owner-occupied developers are aware of the site and have been in contact with the ownership. We reached out to the owner, who was interested for a number of years in potentially redeveloping a portion of the golf course, and came up with a plan that we thought was really great. That I'm very surprised to hear no one else is seeing all the benefits to it. As a member of the community myself, as someone who does rent, I assure you, it is a home when you rent it, just because you don't own it.
I'm just curious if there has been interchange contact with, with other developers, a developer who will be putting in owner-occupied homes. This seems to be the biggest issue of this development, is this?
I think it's, there, with all properties, there's, there's process where a property's put to market, and there's offers that, that come back, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's telling that there have been three proposals for this property, right? There were two that were approved, one in 16, one in 17, and they centered around multifamily units. I think one of the reasons why they centered around multifamily units is because the, the owner of the hotel is specifically looking to add density adjacent to the hotel. The concept is that by virtue of having additional, more folks with disposable income adjacent to the hotel, there's an, there's an increase in the client base built into the hotel. If this property is to be developed with 48 single-family homes, is there the same, is there the same accrual of benefit to the hotel? And I think the answer is no. So I think from a hotel owner's standpoint, there's been a desire to see something that is more unique, something, something that is high income, and something that brings more people in close proximity to the hotel. And so that is underlying the basis.
At the same time, it could probably, I'm sure someone could argue that the more units there, the higher the purchase price for it.
Absolutely.
So that, so that could be taken...
Which, which translates to the capacity to do things like be able to donate a conservation easement, right? So if you're, if you're unable, if you're looking at a single-family owner-occupied development, and you're building traditional lots, you probably don't get the same number of units, right? So you're, you're probably having to spread units over a greater portion of the property. So is there a nine-hole golf course remaining? Is there a conservation easement? Is it, does it, does it revert to attached product? I mean, all of these things are very interconnected, right?
Yeah, that's an open question.
It, it really is. And I think that the fact that you've seen multiple proposals, all with, all with rental units and higher, you know, higher relative densities, 239 units for us, were, what, 20, 30% lower than approved projects?
This, this is certainly dramatically better than, you know, the first, first one I saw was the apartment building in the parking lot. And so, the public hearing is closed.
Not technically closed, but run to Commissioner comments.
All right.
Real close.
I guess the biggest issue that I have with this is the way the project is designed, is there's no possibility in the future that a single unit could be converted to someone who wanted to buy his or her unit that he's living in.
Yeah, and, and you know, it's, it's interesting because I think when I was here last time, I made reference to, last time I was in Westmont, I was working on, and I'm drawing the blank, a blank on it right now, but it was a 500-unit multifamily deal in, in a south part of town. And it was divided ownership, and as a result of the divided ownership, there was a lack of maintenance. There were all kinds of criminal activity that was going on. And so what did we do? We came in, I had a client who purchased 99 different ownership interests. We, we were able to consolidate it down by virtue of, by virtue of taking all of those ownership interests and consolidated it into a single ownership interest. What were we able to do? We made a significant, significant reinvestment in that property. We built a clubhouse. Clubhouse didn't exist before. We renovated all of the units. And what's happened? That, that thing turned on and died.
Much improved.
We, we completely re-tenanted it. And, and we, so you had a good operator, you had somebody who came in, they, they leaned on the institutional power of large developers like Accor, or like Harrison Street, who know what they're doing and have done this all across the, the country. And they turned what was one of the biggest eyesores in Westmont into a great little project. And so I, I think all of the, all of these questions about, well, it can't be converted to, it can't be split up, I think they take a lesson from a couple of years ago and recognize that there's a, there's a level of improvement that's happening here. that there's a, there's a level of improvement that's happening here as a result of the fact that it's rented. We would not be making the level of investment that we are making if this was for-sale housing.
But we understand. I think that has come up with numerous people tonight, the fact that Westmont's rental percentage has already been considered, is already is considerably higher than all the neighboring communities. And yet, last year, we approved Quincy Station here, this rental apartment building, but it's transitory and development. It's right downtown and it's having, it's having an impact on the businesses downtown because it's, it's close in. And, and, but that was, it went against the comprehensive plan. I supported it though because of the TOD aspect. And putting another 200 units of rental on, in a community that's already by far as the highest percentage of its total units that are already rentals, I think would be, you know, 30 years from now, when somebody looks back and, who were those guys on the village board and on planning and zoning who, you know, took, turned Westmont into a, nothing but renters? It's significant and it's, it's a, it's a major, it's a, it's a major issue. And I just think that you could do better by at least trying to look at owner-occupied development.
And 10, 10 years ago, I probably would have agreed with you. I absolutely, I probably would have 10 years ago. But the fact of the matter is, the Great Recession happened. There was a fundamental shift in the dynamic, right? People younger than me, I bought my first house in 2005. I bought it the day before I got married, right? People, people just a couple of years younger than me, they do not, they, they saw parents get hurt from the Great Recession. They no longer buy and sell homes as fungible assets. When I bought that house in 2005 in Oswego, my base presumption was I'll be here three or four years, make tens of thousands of dollars, and I'll move on to my next house. It was great, right? That, that's what was happening in the world. That fundamentally shift with, shifted with the Great Recession. People view homes as long-term assets in today's world. That you don't buy a house today in order to sell it in two years. People, individuals are not buying houses now in order to rent them out. It's happening with larger corporations. But I, I think the, the fact is that more people are renting, they're renting for longer times, and they're renters by choice. And that's the dynamic shift, right? The, the objection to renters historically, I mean, call a spade a spade. Everybody here has said it, we don't want those people, right? It's, we don't want lower incomes, we want higher income earners, we want people who we perceive as taking better care of their homes. I mean, that's been said repeatedly tonight. And the, the fact of the matter is that if you do any sort of study, the gentleman who was like the second speaker stood up, he's a real estate professional, he was not on our team, and he spoke from a financing arm, and he said, this is the trend of development. It's the hottest thing in real estate today.
But it certainly has been through the Sun Belt, you know, in the southern unit.
But we have old people here too. Your comp plan says that you're aging. Your comp plan says that yes, single-family homes should be built. But your comp plan specifically says, single-family homes should be owned and occupied. And I think that's, I think that's the big miss.
There's also a change in preferences in the country. Does anyone call a cab anymore? You use Uber. I can almost guarantee it. The Uber generation is coming. This home may not be for you, or you, or you, but there are plenty of people out there that it's for. And not only are there a lot of people, they are clamoring for it. They are so excited. When I talk to people, people my age, people my parents' age, everyone is so excited about this. The convenience that we all crave that comes with technology is what is going to be provided here. And I ask you, if we were going to propose a development under the B3 zoning that was by right, we all acknowledge that that's a retail zoning, and I was going to bring a Costco here, and everyone liked a grocery store concept, would you say to me, did you first take it to someone who's local, who is an owner-occupier to fill that space rather than Costco? All I ask for is the same treatment as that business did. And really, it's, it's frustrating for me because I ride my bike with my little sisters to the restaurant in the hotel. The hotel struggled a lot, but I still go. And you know what we do to get there? We have to ride up the asphalt. There's no sidewalk. I have to go with them because my parents won't, I mean, won't let her go by herself. The connectivity that this is going to bring to the neighborhood is unbelievable. I'm a guy who plays basketball at Black Hawk Park. I put my heart and soul into this thing, and I know this is something that everyone would be proud of. My family would want to live there. I will want to live there. And I promise you all that the for-sale home community that you're clamoring for, sorry to be repetitive with that word, will not be as nice as this community. And, and I apologize if I get a little bit emotional because I'd love for someone to say to my pregnant wife that the home that we rent in the city is not a home. The American dream is not to own a home, the American dream is to live in one. I want to live in a home. And sir, I do think that $4,000 is not as much money as you think, I really don't. And if you were to do the math on what it costs to live in Oakwood, it's going to cost you a lot more for, and you're going to get a lot less. And the people who are going to live here for the most part are high-income earners. I've talked to a lot of them, talked to the brokers who represent them. The empty nesters who will spend three months out of the year in, you said, I think Texas and Florida, really it's Phoenix probably, coming from Chicago, they're all going to Phoenix. They're going to love that there is an onsite maintenance staff, not some handyman that they have to worry if he's going to show up or not, that is always onsite, nine to five, Monday through Friday. They know them by name. They've known them for years, that they will be there to check on the home. They will be there to fix something if it's broke. These homes will be required by the nature of them and the lending that we will have in order to build them, to be maintained to the utmost quality, likely better quality than a lot of for-sale homes. We will be required to put aside money to replace the roofs. For-sale homeowners aren't required to do that. I heard someone come up here earlier today and talked about homes in Westmont that are falling apart, and their neighbors 12 to 15 feet away from them have cars in their lawn. They're going to be really excited when our community comes up because they won't have that problem, because we can actually enforce it.
Oh yeah.
That's legally.
Well.
I just, I thank you for your time, and I just want to challenge.
Thank you. I can't, personally, I can't, I can't get past this fact that if we put these 239 units up there that are rental units and will always be that way, that will certainly alter the essential character of this community to a point where it can never.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Do you know what percentage over the housing stock in Westmont will change with our 239 homes? I bet you'd be surprised what the answer is.
Well, it will take us well over 50%.
It will not. It's less than a percentage point. So I challenged the SANS score a little bit. I understand that for a lot of people, it might not be something you want to live in, but there's a lot of people that would love to come to this community. I'm one of them.
I think there are about 10,000 housing units in this community. If you add 200 more, that's 2%. And I'm not going to argue percentages or numbers. I just think that you can do better with this, I really do.
As we move forward, can I ask where the, the 48% came from? Is that a?
The 2010 census. We've got the census figures here.
Maybe mine numbers were slightly different if I was using 2020.
And I, it was, it was a question, right? I, I didn't, I didn't know. All I had seen is in the comprehensive plan that it said that the community was 70% single-family, so I was wondering where those numbers came from.
And it's not necessarily a 2% increase because the denominator is rising with it as well.
Correct.
And there's not a single home for sale right now in Oakwood, so for people that want to come to the community, they don't have that opportunity.
Chairman Carmichael.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I add another couple of comments?
Please.
I just looked in Zillow.
I just wanted to put on the record that I know that we don't often spend a lot of time on the findings of fact. But when the criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used under the current conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which is located, I don't think that that has been met. The second criteria, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. I don't agree with the answer to that. I don't agree with the answer to the variations, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality, which is exactly what you're talking about. So I just want to go on the record that I do not agree with the findings of fact in these cases.
If I could add just a couple of things, there's many items that we're voting on, and I realize that everyone's focused on 239 units and the fact that they're rentals. But I think in '05, '09, 2022, we're cleaning up an ordinance on existing sign that should be considered. And also taking this, it by no means meant to persuade anyone to do, vote one way or the other, but it does sound like density is an issue, and I think there's ways to vote on these items that would make your voice heard in that regard.
And I'll just clarify one thing with these, we've, we're holding this public hearing for these two items together because they are interrelated. I believe that if the residential development of Lot 2 fails, then the proposed subdivision, which carves out the front nine as a conservation easement, and the Lot 5 where the sign is to be located, all of that goes away also.
Are they two separate cases though?
They are two separate cases.
Right.
But, and Russ, if you can speak for the current property owner, correct me if I'm wrong, but if the plat of subdivision were to be approved, and the variance for the off-premise sign, would the owner be interested in, in actually completing, following through with that plat, getting it recorded, and creating these lots?
I mean, I think we'd like a vote from the planning commission on all of it, and we'll decide following this meeting and moving forward to the village board how to proceed. So I mean, I think respectfully, we would like a vote on both cases, all items, so that we preserve optionality.
There certainly will be a vote. And I guess to, his comment, which is, I think if you, the sign.
I understand what you're saying about the plat subdivision.
The sign variance.
Right.
Is only necessitated by the proposed subdivision.
Fair enough.
And, and I don't know if the residential component fails, if the hotel owner would nonetheless want to subdivide the property as proposed and create the lots in this manner, or whether it would all disappear and the property owner would try it new with another developer. Either way, you're going to have to vote.
That's what I'm here for.
Yeah.
Just to answer that, John, on behalf of the owner, I'm here on behalf of WCW, who owns actually all of these lots that are in the proposed case 59. I, yeah, I don't think.
Can I ask that you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, yeah, Ari Rosenthal. I, I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay, fair enough.
Whether or not they'd still want to proceed or not.
Okay.
It's conceivable with the conservation easement, obviously the impact, the plan certainly of the conservation easement is a nine-hole course, but it could be changed. And we'll have to see what you do, and then we'll kind of reconfigure what.
I have a quick question for, for you, sir, if I could, if I may. Is the current owner, are they a California-based company?
The WCW, well, I don't know if it's based in California. I mean, there's a bunch of different entities. Are you referring, there's technically different ownership from the hotel?
I was going through a lot of different information. There's quite a bit in here to go over the last couple of weeks.
There's a bunch of different entities, managing agents. So you do have some people in California, you've got some people in New Zealand.
Okay.
So they're all over the place. But, and there's an affiliation, technically the hotel is not really a part of any of this, but WCW is affiliated with that, so certainly they're looking out for the interests of the hotel. That's partly, you know, all the negotiations on the conservation easement, the hotel buffer zone was, even though the hotel group technically isn't a party to this, certainly concerned about the viability, you know, for the hotel.
So who stays on to manage the, the golf course, the nine-hole golf course?
The hotel at this point. I mean, there's no plan for any change. It's just that I think to Mr. Whitaker's point, you know, we, we can't predict, I think he's right, you know, certainly, I'm in my 60s, but I was younger, I wanted to do golf all the time. No one wants to do it anymore, certainly do the five hours of golf.
I do, but that's just.
Well, you're a rare breed, so that's, all we're saying is we don't know 75 years from now if it will still be something viable. So, but ultimately, that was the decision is under the conservation easement. If we didn't want to do it, we'd give it to the.
Got it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Director, does anybody else have anything to add? Then we will close the public hearing at this point, and the chair would entertain a motion to approve PCC 0592022, request from WCW Landowner LLC regarding the property at 3,500 Midwest Road in Oakbrook for the following. A, the zoning ordinance variance request to permit an off-premises ground sign.
So move Scales.
Motion?
Second.
Second, Peterson. Discussion? Seeing none. Roll call. Mr. Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry? Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes no, and Chairman Carmichael? B, preliminary plat of subdivision to subdivide one parcel into five lots. I see a motion to approve.
Subruved. Scales?
Scales. Second, Van Buren.
Van Buren.
I have a motion second. Discussion on the issue? Seeing none. Roll call, please. Okay. I have to write this. Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes no. Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
And Chairman Carmichael? Under PCC 0602022, requests from WCW Landowner LLC and Core PBSFR Acquisition Vehicle LLC regarding the property at 3,500 Midwest Road in Oakbrook for the following. A, comprehensive plan amendment to redesignate approximately 52.8 acres from parks, open space, to single, single-family detached residential.
So move Scales.
Second, Thomas. Second, Thomas. Second, Thomas, okay. Commissioner Scales?
I have a, yes, Scales and Thomas.
Yeah.
So I have a motion.
Yeah.
Okay. No discussion? Roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes no. Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
And Chairman Carmichael?
No.
Under B, special use permit request to allow residential dwelling units in the B3 Special Development District.
So move Tom. Scales?
Tom, Thomas's motion, Scales is second.
Which one do you want?
It's a lot of work. Well, just get a keeper.
You're clamping up.
Okay. Discussion on the issue? Okay, we have a roll call. Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes no. Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Scales already voted, or didn't you?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And Chairman Carmichael?
No. Under C, a map amendment request to rezone from B3 Special Development District to a planned development overlay district in the underlying B3 Special Development District with the following waivers from the zoning ordinance. First, a waiver to reduce the setback for legally subdivided internal parcels. And second, a waiver to reduce the minimum spacing between buildings. Commissioner Scales, did you have a comment?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for consideration that we separate one and two as separate votes. C1 is one and C2 is another. How are we can do that? I think those are two very separate issues and.
I'll second your motion.
So if we could do it then, three votes, one would be to approve.
The change?
The, the rezoning to a planned development overlay district. And then you can vote separately on the two waivers.
Okay.
Okay. First vote, map amendment request to rezone from B3 Special.
First vote, map amendment request to rezone from B3 Special Development District to a planned development overlay district in the underlying B3 Special Development District.
Okay, I'll move that.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion.
Second.
Scales?
Okay.
Discussion, seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes no, and Chairman Carmichael?
No. Now, a waiver to reduce the setback for legally subdivided internal parcels.
Second, or I'm sorry, some move, Scales?
Scales.
11:30, sorry.
Second.
Second.
Peterson. Discussion, seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Let's see, where are we? Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes no, and Chairman Carmichael?
No. And second, a waiver to reduce the minimum spacing between buildings. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved. Scales?
Scales.
Second.
Second, Peterson. Discussion, seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Van Buren votes no, Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Scales?
No.
Commissioner Peterson?
No.
And Chairman Carmichael?
No. Under D, zoning ordinance variance request to exceed the maximum area for driveways and reduce the minimum landscaped area for yards abutting a street.
Motion. Motion, Scales.
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 Second.
Peterson, second. Discussion, seeing none, roll call. Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Scales?
No.
Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes no, and Chairman Carmichael?
No. Under E, zoning ordinance variance request to permit an additional ground sign.
Motion, Scales?
Motion to approve, Scales.
Second.
Second.
Thomas. Okay.
Roll call.
Van Buren votes no. Lavoy?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Scales?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Carmichael?
No.
Did you get your ears on there? Pardon me? Got your vote in there?
Yes, Van Buren votes no.
F, zoning ordinance variance request to permit an off-per premises ground sign. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Van Buren?
Scales.
Second, on Scales.
Discussion, seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Mr. Van Buren votes no, and Chairman Carmichael?
No. And finally, under G, B3 Special Development District preliminary and final concept plan approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, Scales?
Motion, Scales, to approve.
Second, Thomas.
Second, Thomas. Discussion, seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Scales?
No.
Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes no, and Chairman Carmichael?
No. Well, gentlemen, you see what our approval to the recommendation to the village board will be, and so you'll remain in contact with staff and our attorney and whether you want to go forward or revise. And thank you very much for coming, your effort, and to the public, and for all your work.
No additional items, no additional items, so anyone else have anything prior to adjournment? The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, before that, just, there is a meeting next week, the regularly scheduled meeting, March 8.
And for the public, next Wednesday night, we will have a regular meeting, and nothing about these agenda items will be on the meeting next week, for your information.
But you could come in, anyway.
But you're welcome to attend.
Thank you.
It's got to be quiet.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, Scales?
Scales. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I raised my hand.[1784.41]